I may be in the audience.
Oh, I expect that. You'll be even worse then. All right, we're gonna go ahead. Good afternoon. Welcome to the budget hearing of June 16th, 2016 for the constitutional officers. We're glad to have all of you here today. And you know, I think we should go ahead even though this might be a little different, but I think if we'd stand and have prayer and pledge to the legions. Father, we thank you for being with us here today and guiding all of us that have these big decisions that need to be made. And Father, just thank you for all the constitutional officers that look out for Manatee County that work so hard to move us forward and keep us safe and do all the things that they do. Father, we're just so thankful to have them with us today. And please give us strength to do what is right for all in the county for a better quality of life. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It always makes for a better meeting when we have prayer first. Mr. Hunsaker, would you like to move it along, sir?
Madam Chair, today we continue with the review of the various organizations funded by the Board of County Commissioners. Today's organizations are the constitutional officers. And when we finish with the constitutional officers, if you have time, we have some organizations that you didn't finish with yesterday, and we would like to continue with those if at all possible. So according to the schedule today, the property appraiser Cindy Capps would be the first one to present to the board. So Cindy?
Hi Cindy, welcome.
Hey, thank you very much. I'm Cindy Capps, and I'm the Director of Finance for Charlie Hackney, your property appraiser. He regrets that he couldn't be here today to make this presentation. He had a prior commitment. So we'll see if I can move you through a few things briefly, and then I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. Our current operating budget for the fiscal year that we're in right now is $4,947,155. The request that we've made for the fiscal '17 budget going forward is $5,195,797. That's an increase of $248,642. Included in that increase are just a few very major primary expenses. One is a 4% increase in health insurance premiums, as has been proposed by the Finance Office for the board. The other is a 4% increase in compensation for us to basically allocate in the way that the property appraiser sees fit. The other two large expenses that make up that increase are, this is our year to fly the aerials. Jan Brewer has been very instrumental in keeping some of the very large expenses of that item, because I think it totals about $256,000, out of the general fund as much as she possibly could by calling upon the primary users of the product to share in its costs. So in my budget, you will find an amount equalling $42,666, which I think works out to about 1/6. I think we've shared that among six of the power users of that product. And the only other item that's a bit unusual and very necessary is our database server has currently reached the end of its life. It's over six years old. It's the server that basically runs the whole KEMA valuation system, pretty mission-critical for our agency. We had a failure in that server about two weeks ago that took a series of engineers by telephone support. All of one engineer's shift, the next engineer came on, spent his entire shift with our IT director. And finally, when the third engineer got on the phone with us, we were able to get the server up and running. So we're in a pretty serious situation with that server. I would like to say that we could actually purchase it out of maybe some savings that we've been able to accumulate out of this year's budget. The only problem I see with that is that we cannot deploy that server until we get the rollout. It would be really foolish to try to do a migration of data over. The current server will be moved out to the 9/11 center, to the bunker, and that will become the, basically, the redundant backup server for failover. The cost of the server right now, the ODA server that is being quoted to us, is $61,200. You're gonna see that item on Schedule III, which is a capital item. But accompanying that item are some other expenses which you would see on my Schedule II, which is my operating budget. That is the licenses for the servers, which are $27,300. The maintenance for those licenses for the first year, $6,006, and some other maintenance on the server itself. So in short, that's basically where you're gonna see the increases in my budget, and I'd be glad to field any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Whitmore?
So did I hear you, you're still wanting the 4% increase that the county administrator has recommended for your employees, and then you're requesting an additional 4% for general stuff?
No, Commissioner. In prior years, we have not put that 4% increase in until after the board has finished all of its budget discussions, and then I have to do it as an amendment. So when Jan and I were discussing the better way to maybe demonstrate those monies to you and those costs in the budget was to go ahead and put it into the contingency budget on Schedule IV, where it will remain until you all decide that that's the way that you want to go across the board for all the constitutionals. Then we'll actually transfer it over to the personal services budget and actually use it for the purpose of compensation, that compensation. So it's already in the numbers, what I'm saying to you. Basically, out of the $248,000 increase, $159,357 is represented in those two figures, the 4% compensation increase and the 4% increase in health insurance coverage. I've already accounted for all of that, so I don't have to amend later.
But, okay, only because this just seems off. The $248,000, okay, I got that. But you said, or the $159,000, you said that the numbers of the 4% increase and the other stuff were in that?
Yes, ma'am.
And that equals $159,000?
$159,357, yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask a question from somebody?
Yes.
We're recommending 4.8 million, and you're recommending 5.1. So there is a difference.
If you would like, Jan could explain.
Yeah, could somebody?
Yes. Or I'll jump in if you want, whatever, where you wanna go.
Between Cindy and I, we'll walk you through it. The interesting thing about the property appraiser, the numbers she's quoting are her entire budget, but you don't pay for her entire budget. You only pay for about 94% of it.
Right.
Because it's allocated among the other entities which they levy taxes for, that they assessed for. So in your budget on page seven of the information that you were provided, if you look in column two on page seven, in column two, there's another, a number of 4.8 million. And within that number, Cindy has included the 4% salary increase. She's included the 4% for healthcare for the employees, and she's also included the pictometry share that she's gonna be responsible for. That was matched in the budget, in your recommended budget. So we matched everything with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Once we came before you, the day before we came before the budget, Cindy sent it to the Florida Department of Revenue, and her budget included another $33,012 increase beyond what we had when it was originally submitted to us. That's the difference, is the $33,000. And what she's saying is that what happened to her was that the equipment that she had failed on her a couple of weeks before time, and that's why she needs the other $33,000.
That's correct.
And that's your share of it.
Got it.
Is that a piece?
Yes, the total of that difference actually is $35,973, of which you all support us at a proportionate share of 94.27% of our budget.
Thank you.
And that's where the $33,912 difference is.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Whitmore?
No, that was, oh no, I'm sorry. No, that was it. Thanks.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 4% increase that the county administrator is recommending for your department, was that solicited by you, or it was a recommendation from the county administrator?
No. The Department of Revenue limits the increases in compensation, which we call our annual rate, to that equal to the prior year, the year we're currently in, the fiscal year we're currently in, or whatever the state or county chooses to do for its employees. I don't believe the state has chosen to do anything for its employees for a number of years. And so we anticipate, because we see that you guys, you all go two years out, and of course, the budget message is now available on the website, so we know that that recommended increase is 4%. And in prior years, Commissioner Smith, it's been a little bit confusing because I send the Department of Revenue the budget before you all are finished, and then Jan and I have to go back and do an amendment, and I think we ask ourselves a million times, is that in, is that out, is that in, is it out? So instead of waiting, I've got it in a contingency budget line item, and the Department of Revenue will not let me move that over and spend it for personal services until your budget is finished, ratified, rubber stamped, et cetera.
Okay, well, dealing with the raise that you just mentioned, the 4%, I think you mentioned that the state has not made recommendation concerning increases?
Or state employees, correct.
Are you considered state employees?
No, sir.
Okay, so you mentioned the 4% that I asked about.
Yes, sir.
And that came from the Board of County Commission?
Yes, sir. Whatever, the Department of Revenue will permit a property appraiser's office to do for its employees whatever the county is choosing to do for its employees.
So if the county didn't choose the 4%, would you, your department, receive the 4%?
The department would not approve me for that.
The 4% raise that the county administrator is recommending, would that go directly to the employees of the property appraisers' office?
Yes, sir. Not to the property appraiser himself. His salary is set by the state.
I realize that. But the 4% would go directly to the employees of the property appraisers' office, from one to four, whatever it may be?
That's correct.
Whatever you decide.
That's correct. And not just for compensation, Commissioner Smith, but for also for any increases that we would see in the core coverages, because those are all based on my salary base. So Core Life, Core AD&amp;D, Core LTD, those things are gonna move up slightly whenever compensation increases, because those are all multipliers, multiples of the actual salary base itself.
Dealing with the Department of Revenue, what have been their recommendation for the increase of the last three years?
The Department of Revenue itself doesn't make that decision. The legislature does, and I don't believe that they have done an increase for state employees for the last three years.
Okay, which means, have you received the raise from the Board of County Commission the last three years, a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
But how much was that?
Equal to whatever Mr. Hunsaker has recommended to you all for county employees. I think it was 4% in the last two years, if I recall.
And that came from the county administrator unsolicited by you?
Yes, sir.
Your department?
That would be correct.
And I think you stated that if we didn't make that recommendation, employees would not receive any raise whatsoever?
The Department of Revenue in general does not permit a property appraiser in any of the counties to offer a compensation increase to its employees unless that is something that's being done for all of the county employees and/or across the board for all the other constitutionals. They would limit that. It would have to be a very unusual circumstance. I would have to probably have a salary study done to make a case for doing anything outside of that box.
You would have to make a case to the?
To the Department of Revenue, if I found that I had a salary that was just not in line with market for some reason. Never done that before.
Okay, let me put a disclaimer out here first. I'm the commissioner that been advocating for constitutional offices to give a public presentation to justify the 4% raise of the constitutional office department, mainly because quite a few people want to know why would we be doing it? Do they need it? Did they solicit it for it? Was it just a recommendation from us and based on what? I realize that employees bust their butt, you know, most of them don't make much money. And so my whole objective of doing it was to justify the means of the 4% recommendation that our county administrator has recommended to the Board of Directors, of County Commissioners. Saying that, the employees of your department, the last two years, I think you said, they received increases?
Yes.
And your budget goes to Department of Revenue also, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you submit a budget here?
I submit a copy of the budget that I send to the Department of Revenue.
And you send it to the county administrator?
Yes, Mr. Hackney sent it to the county administrators. I sent a copy to Jan Brewer.
It also came to all the Commissioners?
Yeah, we got it.
Okay. I don't know if we got that last year.
Not last year, but this year.
Yeah, I know we didn't, that's why I'm asking a question. Okay, that's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Banack?
Yeah, I think you explained it, but it was just a little bit confusing because you have FTE 1, and then you have the additional 33 next to it, but it's really that FTE 1, additional employee, you're not asking additional funding. That additional funding was actually for the?
Yeah, I don't think you meant to do that, did you?
Well, I added, what we added in each of yours is if they increased anything, Cindy did increase by one FTE.
No.
But she absorbed it, you absorbed it within?
No, actually, this year, we, actually, last year, we needed three additional employees. And we surrendered one of those positions.
Exactly.
And instead, we hired two additional employees. And thanks to a pretty major overhaul of the appraisal department by our chief appraiser, he's restructured all of the jobs so that I'm not dealing with field evaluators and appraisers, and he's changed all of those jobs into a hybrid position. So now, each of them is now responsible for a little bit of both of those functions, and it's really worked out well.
Right.
So even though we sort of said, hey, we'll go with two, but next year we need that one back, we don't feel that we need that one. So there are no addition, there's no additional staffing requested at this point.
If I may, Madam Chairman, I think the confusion, we got a document on May 20th that says you're using one for an administrative assistant.
You're right. So because I'm really good with saving money, I'm really good with saving money, I'd actually, we benefited greatly from some people who retired who had been there for a long time. And because of the restructure, I don't have to go out and hire senior people to replace retiring senior people. And that helped me to accumulate a little bit of annual rate. And it just doesn't make sense to me to look at it and say, well, let's just start handing it out. That's not prudent. So when I had a visit from Kathy Galavies, my budget analyst from the Department of Revenue, she suggested that we accumulated and make a position out of it without having to ask for additional funding. So I worked within my annual rate, but I did increase staffing by the one, yeah, by the one.
By one, so, but you kept the revenue?
Kept the annual rate.
Equal, and even though the one is next to the 33,912, that's not really related?
That's not, yeah, that's correct.
As was explained, because that's why, okay. Appreciate you explaining how you're keeping your costs down, because it's very important as we?
I'll add this as well. When I was speaking this year to Kathy Galavies, my budget analyst, she asked me the question that I also posed to my own IT department, and that is, if you have some revenue this year that is unspent, is it possible to go ahead and get that server, even if it's sort of late in the year, knowing that we can't deploy it probably until the October roll is securely in the hands of the Department of Revenue? So I told her I felt that I needed to keep it in the budget. It's on Schedule III as a capital item, but if we get close to the end, and it looks like we've been able to have savings in other areas, I could transfer monies into that Schedule III and make that purchase this year. And I told her that if I did that, I would amend the budget downward to reflect the lack of, the need, that I wouldn't have a need for that item for next year.
Good girl.
So that's what we're going to try to do. I just don't, it's not, it doesn't make sense to buy it too early, but if we can, we will.
Good. We appreciate you taking that action to try to make sure that you're able to hold off, if you can, and have the revenue available. So thank you.
Yep.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
I hate to do this to you, Commissioner.
She's gone, I want to ask her.
In just a minute.
She doesn't ask her.
It's your turn.
But she doesn't sit down.
Sorry.
Yeah, she'll be back.
Second time I knocked it over.
Third time's a charm.
So I wanted to thank you for coming today and being so prudent and staying within your means. And, you know, we're tasked with approving more and more rooftops every year, and so you're responsible for going out there and analyzing all that data. So I appreciate all you've been doing with, you know, the responsibility of more inventory, and you're not increasing staff.
We've gotta get them on the roll for you.
Yeah, so really appreciate all you've been doing, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dealing with the health insurance, it was previously discussed, your employees is on what type of policy?
They're on the same policy that the county employees are on, and so now there's those four, the four tiers, you know, the way that health insurance is structured now. And so what I do, when I look at the staff at each budget year, is I put everybody in the tier that they are currently in, and if I have any vacancies, I have to project what tier that new hire might be in. I don't have any vacancies at this point in time, so everything's pretty accurate. And then applied the 4% increase to each of those actual individual tier rates, and then multiplied it out. I think it only made a difference of a little over $12,000, really, overall, on the employer's side.
So is the increase coming from many county government or some kind of outside forces?
The increase came as a request from your budget office.
From us?
Yes.
But you have the same insurance that?
Yes.
Okay. How many employees do you have?
I think we're at 58, full-time.
58 full-time?
58.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I don't see anyone else on the board, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was a good presentation. Thank you.
Would you publicly comment?
Not until the end of the meeting. Do you want to move forward?
Supervisor.
Next would be the supervisor of elections. Kind, sir.
Page 27.
How are we all doing today?
All right.
Good afternoon.
You know, I've been at this, right at three years now, and I'm starting, and I really mean it, just starting to get a good feel of the budget. I think too many times we get new people in the thing, and they think they know the budget right away, and we find out that we really truly don't. But we were actually asking for a little bit of a decrease this year.
Wait a minute, can you say that again?
Just saw that. Wow!
I think you're gonna, I think you'll like the rest of my presentation even better. But I think one of the things you're gonna understand is what we do this year, part of it is gonna go into the primary, which will be in this budget, and then all of a sudden, we gotta swing it over into the general election, which will be in next year's budget. And so some of the times, the numbers, even though we're gonna be asking for a decrease, when you're trying to figure out which year it's gonna be in and out of, I drag Scott along, because Scott knows all the answers. So, but we will figure it out. We are actually asking for a decrease. Right now, we currently have 15 full-time employees, and by this time next month, we will have a little over 1,000. Okay? And that's basically what happens to the deal. And then, of course, those people will go away for a couple of months, and then they come back in November as we go into the election. So sometimes our budget numbers don't coincide with what you all normally think. But we started out, when I got elected, we had 120-some precincts. We're now down to 70 precincts. And with no lines, we didn't have any lines the last time. We don't expect any this time. But we've increased the vote by mail substantially, and the people of Manatee County have really responded to vote by mail. So consequently, that saves us a lot on the lines, and the fact that we opened five early voting sites. Early voting sites are not necessarily the answer to all voting lines, they're really not. People do not really get excited about voting too early. We don't get the turnout we'd like to have. But the biggest thing was the equipment. If you'll remember, our original budget for the equipment purchase, we will be turning back to the county this year. We ended up saving about $1,002,000 on the equipment. You'll get that money back this year. And then last year's budget, if you'll remember, when I was here last time, we were talking about saving money, because we did not know what was gonna happen with the redistricting across the state, that we were gonna have to face some expenses there. So rather than giving you that $600,000 back last year, we asked you to roll it into this year. We were able to bring that in for just a shade under $100,000, so you should be getting back about $500,000 of that. And other than that, I think that'll explain where we're at.
Speechless.
I know.
Commissioner Whitmore.
I'm cheap.
I know, that's what we like. So total of 1.7 million will be returning back to us, or was that 500 in that?
It'll be roughly about 1.7, maybe a little higher than that when we finally get the numbers back, but it'll definitely be the 1.7, I think will be definitely back to you, maybe a little higher.
We're all writing that down.
Where does that go?
Write it down.
Yeah.
Where does it go to the general?
General fund.
General fund, yeah.
Good dog. Whoa, write that down.
Anything else, Commissioner Whitmore?
No, that was it.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator Bennett, I know the last several elections have been flawless that you've been supervising over. My question to you, I know you closed some of the precincts, and it has been successful thus far, and you have five early open stations. But let me ask you this here, do you think we're going to, in Arizona, they did the same thing you did, and it was successful, but during the primary of the president's race, they had lines, long lines, for three and four hours, because they had closed a great number of them, the precincts. Are you prepared, and have you studied that issue, you know, in Arizona, what took place to make sure that don't happen here?
We have followed the Arizona thing quite closely, to be honest with you. We are prepared if we have to, if we experience that kind of a turnout. Obviously, I think everybody would agree that this is gonna be a strange election, okay? The biggest fear is that one of them's gonna win.
Yeah.
So we don't quite know who's gonna turn out and what's gonna happen. Some of you are a little slow on the uptake. Anyhow, it really is. It's a strange year, but we feel that we will be able to judge it. But the problem with it is, and that's where you get into the trouble, because there will not be any presidential candidates on that primary, okay?
Oh, yeah.
We will not get that good of an indication. So we could go into the general and have an issue, okay? I mean, that's very, very possible. We don't expect it. We think, right now, we have approximately 25% of the voters in Manatee County are voting by mail. It's increasing every day. We're hoping to be able to get the press to really do some advertising out there on the early voting, but I think that we'll be in good shape. I've got an unbelievable staff, I really truly do. And so I think that the staff is on top of these issues, and we'll walk it through, and we'll go from there.
Well, I'm glad to hear you was monitoring the Arizona thing, because I know they had success prior, and then it wasn't expected for?
But they didn't have the staff I've got.
For the turnout. And so on the primary that we have, you know, August the 30th, you will have a kind of idea based on that turnout, which it won't be like November the 8th, I know.
Correct.
But it can give you a kind of idea of what to kind of expect.
It'll give us some kind of an idea of what's going on, and if we really see any kind of an issue, I think we can respond pretty quickly. Most of the precincts that we did end up closing down, we had pretty good relationships with, and we can react pretty quickly to get them open. It would just be me coming back and talking to you all about adding a couple of other precincts.
Could you state your early precinct sites for the record, because we on TV, please, if you can?
Okay, we have the West Manatee Fire Department, we have my office, we have the Palmetto City Library, we have the Rocky Bluff Library, and we have Lakewood Ranch.
And the, I think the cards just came out, maybe a couple of months ago, your new voter registration?
That was part of the mailing that I, we indicated, we asked to save the money for, we resent them out, and we did that.
Does that, I haven't even opened mine yet, but does that card has the precinct location on there?
I didn't see you register to vote the other day. Yes, it does have your precinct location on it, so all those cards have it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Senator Bennett, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Banack?
Yeah, and I just wanna say thank you again for bringing in a budget that is below the budget last year. It's very, very unusual.
Can you talk a little bit, since we have you on camera, on the vote-by-mail, what's required to do? I know it's a growing part of the electorate is voting by mail, but it's, they need to understand, still, some people might not know how to sign up to do that.
You know, it's really interesting, vote-by-mail, and there's so much question about it. People, myself, and Commissioner Bustle's agent, a few of us, we're stuck at the old school, we want to go down and drop it in a box, okay, because that's what we trust. And so, what we've done is, we've kind of, we didn't break the rules, we kind of stretched the rules in Tallahassee, drop off points for vote-by-mail ballots, you can take those to any early voting site, and if we're open, you can leave them there. So, we have lock boxes there, we bring them into the office every night. The security on vote-by-mail is phenomenal right now, and it's an interesting process, and some of you who have served on the canvassing board have seen the detail that we go through to protect the security and the privacy of your vote-by-mail. It's just absolutely unbelievable, the things that we do to protect that. I've always said, I could not even find my own ballot if I had to, it's just no way to do it, the way we process it. But, what's happening on the people across the country right now, there are four states that pretty much vote 100% vote-by-mail, Washington, Oregon, Colorado, and one of the other ones just went to it. And so, you're seeing that. One of the things that we're looking at in Florida, as you would expect, I'm involved with the Legislative Committee for the Supervisory Elections across the state, and we're looking to get permission from the legislature to try out what we would call vote centers. In a vote center, what we would do, take all of Manatee County, close down all of our precincts, and open up, say, 10, maybe 12, I don't know what that number would be. But, they would be open for two weeks, okay, so anybody could drive by any time, so you're on your way to work, you've got a line at that one, you just go to the next one, or whatever it is. But, we would have a two-week period of time where everybody would have an opportunity to vote. It allows people who are locked in homes, they can't get out, the mobility, they would have a two-week period of time, if they wanted to go and vote in person, they would have a two-week period of time on that, and we'd probably have 10 locations in Manatee County. So, you're seeing the vote-by-mail increase drastically, as we're really encouraging more people to vote. What happens with vote-by-mail is really, really interesting. Approximately 85% of the people who request a vote-by-mail ballot will vote it, okay? Versus the number of people who will go to a precinct, when you take some of the small elections, the city elections, Anne Maria, Bradenton, those elections, if we get a 20% turnout, that's a big number. But, even in those small elections, the vote-by-mail will be substantially higher, because people have it at home for a couple of weeks, you get a better educated voter, and I'm not talking an educated voter because of a college degree, but you've got the opportunity of you and your spouse sitting down and talking about it in the morning, talking, sharing it with the kids, the kids are there, the kids are home from college, all of a sudden, you get a better educated voter. The other thing that we're seeing is, when your kids go off to college, okay, they're still registered to vote in Manatee County, their ballot follows them whether they go to Georgia, why anybody would do that, I don't know, but if they go to Georgia, or wherever, okay, their ballot follows them, so consequently, people are taking more interest in it.
All right, Commissioner DiSabatino.
Oh, great, great job, and music to our ears. So, no, and I didn't hear of any problems in South County with the redistricting and so forth, so that's been great. 25% vote-by-mail, any idea how many vote early, other than by mail, that go there?
It's a small number.
It's not a big turnout that you would think.
It's really not. People are, it's like they don't get anxious about it. You know, I think a lot of people thought the early voting sites, there was a big push on it. I remember when I actually passed the legislation to reduce the number of days barely voted, there were a lot of people that wanted to hang me, but I actually reviewed the numbers, and I saw that they weren't showing up. And so, I think consequently, sometimes we do things because people think it's going to be a good deal. And I kind of look at things, how do we look at the budget? Where, how can I provide the same amount of services, or better services, and reduce the cost? And that's really what we're looking at.
Yeah, great, and I know I've done a lot of the early voting and.
Lakewood Ranch, by the way, tears them up. That's without a doubt, and even beats my office. Why do everybody want to go to Lakewood Ranch, rather than come and see me? I don't know.
I know, I come see you.
I'll do a survey.
Question for the county administrator, is that 1.7 that's going to be returned factored in, is that baked in, or is that money that's available to be spent elsewhere?
We've accounted for that. If you start spending that money, I would be very upset, I'll keep it.
Okay, all right, just wanted to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Whitmore?
I just have a question, because I'm one of those that have to go and put my ballot in, and then I always ask for two stickers, so I can wear one, because I do early, so I can wear one on Election Day. But, if I do it by mail, do you vote, do you count those before you count the others, the precincts coming in, or does that come after the fact? Is there a process on Election Night?
Right, what happens on actually Election Night, we actually start running the ballots ahead of time, but we don't know those numbers, and I really mean that, we don't run the tallies. On Election Night, at 7 o'clock, okay, is the first time we run those tallies, all of the absentee ballots are accounted for right then and there. So, a lot of people have a question, they say, well, my mailed ballot's not going to count. Actually, it's the first one that counts.
That's what I wanted to know.
And so, we process those immediately, we come out with that number. So, oftentimes, if you've been down on Election Night, all of a sudden, you see a whole bunch of numbers jump up. Those are really the vote-by-mail numbers, okay? So, that jumps up first, and then, is the other precincts wired in? And because the new equipment we've got, we've gotten rid of a lot of delays and phone time, and so, those numbers come out real quick. In Manatee County, it normally takes us about 45 minutes to give you the entire total.
And I just have to make a comment about, you made a comment about, up in Tallahassee, when you actually looked at the numbers, people said they wanted to do this, but they really didn't show. I remember when you were Senate, when we would go up there, well, we didn't, weren't going up there for a long time, and we met with you down here, and you go, well, how do you expect me to represent you, when you don't even take the time to come up there? So, ever since you've said that to us, we have gone up every year, and we've been successful.
It means a lot.
It does, you want to see face-to-face, we drove five hours to get there for that 15-minute meeting, so, thanks.
I can remember going up to Tallahassee and meeting with you.
Yeah, but you wanted to go to the Governors Club on my ticket.
Oh, hush up. I take it back, I never went to Tallahassee. You know, I don't really have a question, I just want to tell you that you're right about your staff, you have a fantastic staff. It doesn't matter whether you go in there or you call, they are on top of it. And if they can't give you an answer on something when you call, they call back within 30, 45 minutes. I mean, truly, we do have a great, sorry, Mike, it's not because of you, I think it's Scott.
It is Scott, I got to tell you, it's Scott, believe me, between Scott and Sharon, every day for me is an education, too.
Really, just a great job, so, keep it going. I think, you know, how many counties around truly can say that we haven't had any problems with our elections? Knock on wood. Knock on wood.
Well, you know, I can tell you a quick story, and I'll get out of your life, I was, when I first got elected, and I went to the very first Supervisors' Meeting, I said, why are the Supervisory Elections, why do we run for an election in the presidential year? It's the most important election we're going to have, and we ought to go out campaigning. And they said, leave it alone, Bennett. I said, what do you mean, leave it alone? How can you die? And they said, you don't understand, if you're going to have a bad election, it's going to happen in a presidential year. Those people have got four years to forget about it.
That's true. Thank you very much. All right, everyone needs to reduce their budget.
Page 83.
Sorry, guys.
Nice setup, Vanessa.
I know, I figured he'd love me for that, before he gets up there.
Next, we would have Sheriff Stube.
And, we have an announcement here?
Right, I just wanted to update everyone, the report that we had received on the SROs, it was an inaccurate report from the school board, had some inaccuracies. I got together with Mr. Salisbury, and he and I are in complete agreement, so the $415 that you were going to be giving to the sheriff evens out, you will be paying 50% for all SRO officers, as the school will then be paying 50%.
I've got a question on that, does the money go to the sheriff, or to the school board?
It will go to the sheriff.
And on that? Commissioner Bennett? Okay, so, yeah, there seemed to be some confusion about this money for the SROs, these are SROs that were existing previously, but now we're funding it differently, or it was just?
Yes, they are existing SROs, it's just a billing adjustment to get it so that it's 50% paid for your side, and 50% paid by the school board. The money will go to the sheriff's department.
And what was it last year?
Last year, you were paying about $400,000, you were paying, there's actually 16 officers, so you were paying about four and a half, now it's going to be, you're paying for eight, and they're paying for eight.
Okay, so there's an increase in the number of SRO, okay, that's confusing. It's not, it's the same.
No, it's the same number.
Same number, we're just paying our fair share.
Right.
That we hadn't been paying.
Okay.
Sheriff Stube and I had a conversation about this.
I understand how it's our fair share.
And we agreed that neither of us could explain it, and that's why Tom and Jan have been looking at the accounting ease of all of this. And it's, I had an airport director once said to me, Ed, this is just accounting, right? And I said, yes. And he said, so I don't have to explain it, right? It's accounting. We just hadn't been paying our fair share.
Okay, so the sheriff was paying 100%, well, the sheriff, the school board was paying 100% before, so?
They were paying roughly about 75, 80%, you were paying the remaining portion.
Okay.
So, now, you will be paying 50%, and the school board will pay 50%.
Yeah, because I mean, the story was.
SRO is school resource officer, the public.
Oh, yes, yes, thanks, yeah.
Why don't they pay that?
So, it's not an increase in service, it's just a redistribution of how the funding is being paid for. And, I'm on the board next, please explain to me why we are paying for SROs, the school board, their budget is larger than ours, why are we paying that for the school board? I think the public would probably want to know that answer, I mean, I want to know that answer.
I want to know that answer.
This was a decision made years ago, before any of us were involved, that the county would share in the cost of school resource officers.
Well, we did.
And we have continued that process over these many years. If you have a meeting with the school board someday, you might want to put this on the table as a discussion item, but it's an answer you don't like, but it's because this is what we've always done.
It's one of those things where we do the same thing over and over again, just because we've been doing it?
Yes.
But, we didn't pay half last year.
Well, the intent was, we were going to pay half, just because we didn't last year, doesn't mean the intent wasn't there for us to pay half.
Well, I'm probably going to want to flag that, because I don't quite understand that.
Want to flag it now?
So, do we flag?
No, let's go ahead and let them present, but then, I'd like to look at that.
Are they charging us for our share we didn't pay last year?
Sheriff.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Hunzaker, Ms. Brewer, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Before I begin our presentation, I want to inform you that my comptroller, Tom Salisbury, will be retiring at the end of this month.
Can't be true.
Tom has been with, in charge of our finances since September of 2003, and I know that throughout the years, he has assisted a number of commissioners, and worked closely with the county staff. He has been a hard-working member of our office, and a good steward of the public's monies. I hope that each of you will realize what he has done for our agency, for the county, and for our community, during the good and the difficult financial times that we have found ourselves in. You will hear from Tom a little bit later in this presentation. I also want to inform you that taking Tom's place is a face and a name that you will recognize. We have hired Neil Unruh, formerly with Shinon Company.
Where?
I was going to tell you that Neil wasn't here today, because he was in training, but he is here.
Not good.
Secret, Neil.
We know him.
So, I would appreciate it, when you have the opportunity, if you'd welcome him to our staff as well. You know, each year I get up here, and I do my presentation, and I'm not fancy like Tom, and put up all kinds of numbers, but this year, I'm going to give you a handout, so that when I mention a few numbers, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Neil doesn't get to carry a gun, does he? No.
Neil didn't hear that.
Commissioner Bustle, I want to know if you get to carry a gun, Neil?
All right, let's get started. Commissioner Smith, in the meeting where Mr. Hunzaker presented his budget to the Commission, you asked how the county arrived at giving 4% pay increase. There was also conversation about pay compression, so let me address both of those issues from my viewpoint. Four years ago, after presenting information from a salary study that we conducted, the Commission gave me a little over $1.5 million to begin addressing our compression issue. The following year, based on a salary study, the Commission gave me a little over $3 million, and that we used to put and place the employees into minimums and ranges according to the pay classifications. Two years ago, based on the study, the Commission again provided $3 million, that allowed us to place almost every employee into the correct minimum and classification. But, as we negotiated that adjustment that year, some employees received substantially more money than others, based on the study. We did not give the money for across-the-board pay increases, because we were trying to fix the problems that we had. Then again, last year, the Commission gave us a little over $3 million, and most received about a 3% increase. But, again, we used the money to bring everyone to the scale as outlined in the plan. This year, should you approve a 4% increase for our employees, it will indeed be used across the board, since all, we, all these years, we've now achieved our pay plan classifications. So, even though there's been a percentage given to the sheriff's office by the Commission, we've used the money as deemed appropriate to fix our pay problems, based on the salary study. Mr. Salisbury will show you a slide that will illustrate that we're slipping in regards to our position with the surrounding agencies that we compare ourselves with. We really should be asking this year for a 5% to 5.5% increase, to stay competitive with those agencies. However, in the past, the majority of the Commission did not want the sheriff's office employees receiving more money than the county employees. So, we take the money we get, and we use it to the best of our abilities, to stay within the confines of our salary plan. So, let's talk about my budget. Requested in my budget, and recommended to be funded by Mr. Hunzaker in his presentation to you, is a 4% salary increase, a health insurance increase, an increase in the Florida retirement system, and eight deputies. Not recommended by Mr. Hunzaker, which I am still requesting, are four corrections deputies, at $337,337, six dispatchers, at $300,939, one public records clerk, at $40,848, two computer forensic analysts, at $117,978, for a total of $796,741. So, here are the issues and the justifications. In this budget, I requested 18 certified positions, Mr. Hunzaker is recommending eight. Mr. Salisbury will show you a slide, representing the same information that we use each year for justification in requesting patrol deputies, using the FBI national average, a ratio of 2.2 deputies per 1,000 residents. In 2015, we were 78 deputies short, last year, actually, this year, we were 92 deputies short, based on the population in the unincorporated areas, not even the entire population of the county. Every year that the population continues to grow, the numbers of deputies that we are going to fall behind will continue to grow. Eight is definitely a start in the right direction. Number one on your sheet that I passed out, I am requesting four corrections deputies, and here's the reason why. The jail was built in 1995, and the Department of Corrections approved 217 certified corrections deputies, and the average inmate population in 1995 was 759. deputies, and the average inmate population in 1995 was 759. Today, there are 224 certified corrections deputies, and the inmate population today was 1,103. So 21 years later, there are seven more deputies to monitor 344 additional inmates. How can you be comfortable with that? As in past years, I'm asking you to commit to a budget that includes new positions for law enforcement and the jail, and I implore you to address this problem. Number two on my sheet. We need 12 dispatchers. I'm asking for six. In 1990, there were four squads of nine dispatchers, which includes supervision. That's 36 people who cover 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. In 1990, there were 330 calls for service a day. Last year, there were 1,020 calls for service a day. So we have the same number of people now that we had in 1990 that are handling 690 calls, more calls for service a day. 690 more calls for service a day. Our dispatchers are on forced overtime. I understand, after reading the newspaper this morning, that you heard a little bit about forced overtime from EMS. In other words, every four or five weeks, on their scheduled two days off, they would be required to work should someone on the working shift call in sick. So even though you're on a scheduled day off, one cannot really make plans because it is possible and likely that you will be called in to work. We desperately need additional dispatchers. I'm requesting two civilian analysts to formally begin a digital forensics unit. In 2015, we seized 201 cell phones. To date, in 2016, we've seized 91. And that's just cell phones. I have not included computers, tablets, or laptops. We currently have two detectives that perform the analysis of the cell phones and other devices. These cases, we have to prioritize, and here are some of the examples. During a recent home invasion where the victim and several suspects exchanged gunfire, the victim was shot and one of the suspects was shot and killed. As a result of that investigation, we seized three cell phones. We want to be able to extract the information as to who the victim and the suspects were calling and texting prior to that home invasion. We want to know the ownership of the cellphone. If we develop additional suspects, the information of the cell phones can be critical in making a case. A cellphone can have 16 gigabytes of data with between 18,000 to 30,000 images that have to be reviewed, and that does not include emails or history of internet use. In most cases, the devices are password-protected. In order to retrieve information from the device, that password and other protections must be breached. There are a number of programs utilized to forensically open, download, and review the data. The coursework associated with these programs is expensive but necessary. Critical to presenting these cases for prosecution is to have the education needed to obtain the information legally and then be able to testify in court as to its content. To send these devices to FDLE or a private contractor is an option with lots of problems. FDLE is so backlog that it takes too long to receive the information, and the cost associated with private sector is expensive. And I'll give you another example. In a possession of child pornography case in 2012, a search warrant was executed at the residence, and several computers were seized. A typical computer can have 500-gigabyte hard drive, and the analyst must look at every byte. Once the images are retrieved, each then has to be reviewed to determine if in fact it's child pornography. Because we did not have the time or the personnel to analyze these computers, they were sent to FDLE, and 13 months later, we received numerous files containing images and videos of children being sexually abused. The use of cell phones and computers by criminals is not going to go away. We have to have a unit dedicated to obtaining the evidence from these devices in a timely manner so that other crimes can be stopped. We need an additional public records clerk. We have been inundated with public records requests, and here are some examples. There is an individual who does not even reside in our community, who routinely makes requests of all law enforcement agencies in the state of Florida. In his most recent request, he is asking for summaries of every internal affairs investigation for all certified deputies. The request did not include a number of years, so we're waiting for clarification.
Unbelievable.
In a recent capital murder case, there were approximately 2,400 pages in the written reports, nearly 100 audiotapes, videotapes, CDs, and DVDs, 2,181 crime scene photographs, approximately 3,000 emails with 2,250 attachments that included search warrants, phone records, text messages, and cell tower locations. There was 270 hours of staff time dedicated to this case. In a death investigation, there were approximately 750 pages of written reports, eight audiotapes, videotapes, CDs, and DVDs, 536 crime scene photographs, approximately 4,000 emails with 536 attachments. There was 225 hours of staff time dedicated to this request. A public records request was made on a particular address for the calls for service and all the reports that were generated because of those calls for service. We spent 73 hours on this request alone. I currently have one public records clerk assigned to my general counsel. In addition, because of the volume of requests that are handled by our attorneys, another position has been dedicated to fulfilling public records requests, taking that person away from her assigned duties. Citizens come in every day making requests for public records. A defense attorney recently made a public records request for a copy of all reports related to the arrest of an individual, all radio transmissions between deputies and from dispatch, all dispatch logs for the deputies on the scene, all cellphone logs for all the deputies on the scene, a copy of the operations plan, a log of the shifts worked by all the deputies involved in the case, and a CAD event chronology. As you can see, the requests can touch a number of our units at the agency. One request can impact training, records, dispatch, crime scene, professional standards, and human resources, and that's just to name a few. Every written report and all emails must be read and scrutinized for information that is exempt or confidential per Florida state statute. That information must then be redacted before the information can be given to the person making the request. All audiotapes, videotapes, CDs, and DVDs must be reviewed as well, so that the protected information can be redacted. Here are some of the numbers associated with public records requests in 2015. My professional standards unit had 43 requests. The Office of General Counsel had 350 requests, and our records section had 7,500 public records requests. That is my justification for a public records clerk. Number three in your handout. So here's what I'm asking for. Four corrections deputies, the price is there, six dispatchers, one public records clerk, and two forensic analysts. Mr. Salisbury will now provide you information, and then I will close, and then we'll take any questions that you may have.
You know, Tom, the sheriff was quick to let us know that you were going to be leaving us, but he didn't mention that this is his last budget as well, so.
I'll do that.
Look at that relief.
You know, I was going to say that. I knew you were thinking it, but I didn't want to do it. I was going to let you do it, so.
He's leaving, so I got to go leave too.
I can understand. Personally, I'm going to miss you both.
Yeah. Well, the first thing I want to know is, who put us on after Senator Bennett?
I know, that's terrible, sorry.
I know, that was just too much fun, wasn't it?
Now, Angel's got to go after you.
It wasn't a setup.
It's just like following...
They're going to have it easy compared to us, so.
It's like following children around.
No comparison, though.
Yeah.
The first three slides we're going to go over is a little bit redundant of what the sheriff has already talked about. But what I want to talk first off is what we submitted on our May 1st budget, simply because we have people, maybe in the audience, people at home, always seem to think that y'all give us everything that we ask for. So in the 13 years I've been here...
I never hear that, so you know. I never hear that.
But since I've been here, that's never happened.
No.
So, anyway, we'll go briefly over what we originally asked for. Our budget that we have currently this year is $107,814,070. The salary increase, the 4 percent, that Mr. Hunzaker told us to put into there is $3,109,093. The sheriff asked for 37 new positions, 12 law enforcement deputies, two sergeants to go with that, that's the $3,945,45, three detectives, and two of those, for instance, computer analysts that he just talked about, for $556,247. Four corrections deputies of $337,337. 12 dispatchers that he was asking for. One bailiff for judicial sergeant, and then the public records clerk for $812,000. And then the 4 percent, like the other constituents, 4 percent health insurance increase of $416,687. And then the District III lease of $260,000, which was that new district that we've got this past year that we were paying for out of rollover dollars. So that came to $115,250,976, an increase of 6.9 percent on mere $7,436,906 that we originally asked for. Now, what was presented back to us by the FMD department is saying this is what is suggested for us. This is the, there again, we start at $107,814,070. The $3,109,093 in salary increase, which we'll talk a little more about in a minute. The eight law enforcement deputies, $1,078,146. The health insurance, naturally, of $416. The billing adjustment with the school board that we just talked about for $415,000. And then the FRS increase of $242,049. Now, that FRS increase was a supplemental amendment that was passed after we got our FRS rates. That was for the .58 for the death benefit for any high-risk individual that happens to die in the, in service out there, that their spouse would continue to get the salary. So that was a supplemental. That impact was $242,000 for our budget for FRS. So that brings it down to $113,075,045, which is a 4.9 percent increase, $5,260,975. So that's what was presented back to us as the proposed that they're wanting to give us for our budget. Just heard the sheriff talk about this. If you take that $113,075,145, that's been proposed. The four corrections deputies of $337, six dispatchers versus the 12 before of $300,939. The two computer forensic analysts of $117,978, and the one public records clerk for $40,000 is the $796, and it gets back to the number that you talked about, $113,000, $113,871,786 was a 5.6 percent increase. So, in either of those scenarios, we're not getting the entire amount of money that we had asked for, the $7.5 million. This scenario here, there's still $1.4 million less than what the original request was, and also 14 less, 16 less people than we asked for on the 37 originally in May's supplemental. So the rest of this presentation is going to, the numbers that we talk about is going to be based off of the $113 million that was proposed back to us for our budget for next year. And this just tells you about our functional areas. You can see that the law enforcement portion of it is the $78,812,998. That's almost 70 percent of our budget strictly for law enforcement types of activities. Corrections, which is 26.6 percent, is $30,059,848. And then we have the bailiffs of the judicial center out there. That's 3.7 percent at $4,202,199, which ties back into our $113,075,045 off of it. All right, so that's just another way of looking as to where do we spend most of our money in our budget? If we break it down by the types of expenses that we've got, our personnel expense of the $98,756,592, that's 87.3 percent of our budget, which is what it normally runs, 86 to 87 and a half of our entire budget. So that's somewhat of a fixed type of a cost that we have every year. Our operating expenses, $12,045,529, which is 10.7, which is considered as basically the same number as previous year almost, it's 10.7 percent in expenses. And then our capital portion, $2.2 million, the $2.272, which is 2 percent of our budget. So that comes, there again, comes down to our $117,075. We do have grants, and we have revenues that we collect that comes back to the clerk's office, back to the county, of $4 million. We're projecting $4,555,688, which gives us a net budget of $108,519,367. And so, a lot of those types of things that we, revenues we get back in, just to refresh your memory, is things that we get from Anna Maria Island, that they contract with us. So you get those monies back, the SRO stuff that we had talked about. We get VOCA grants, the money comes in, comes back to y'all off of that, it all sets the cost. Other things like inmate and officer meals that we have out there. That money that they pay to have meals out at the jail, that comes back to y'all. Equipment types of fees for our off-duty work that our deputies do, there's a fee associated with that for the equipment and the vehicles. That comes back into y'all's coffers, if you will. The federal immigration reimbursement dollars that we file every year, that the federal government gives us some money back, runs anywhere of $70,000 to maybe a little over $100,000. It varies every year off of it. That's money, and certainly the false alarm, everybody's favorite, the fees, fines that we get from that, that's more money. So those are just some of the things that we have that makes up that $4.6 million worth of revenues and grants that we have that helps offset some of that. All right, this is to show you the breakdown of our personnel expenses, the $98.8 million. The deputy salaries are 49.6, that's the certified people, and that's 75.8, or almost 76 percent of our salary. And there again, the important part of that is that they're high-risk, they have a lot higher FRS rates. It's 22.57 percent versus, you see, our civilians at 15.8 million of our salaries, they have a 7.52. So we got 22.57 versus, say, 7.52 percent off of it. That drives a lot of our expenses because of that, off of it. If you look at their overtime, 3.8 million. There again, 90 percent of that goes for the certified, for the law enforcement, for the special power track types of projects that we have out there. Where crimes going up, people work overtime and try to get that, they saturate those areas and try to get that crime down. We have other things like the, we've shown you in the past, when we had ceremonial parades or the other parades around here, the DeSoto parades, any of those types of things, those people working overtime, you know, it comes out of those types of things. So that, that cost is associated with that, too. The health benefits, we've got the $10.9 million. Then we have the FRS FICA of $18.6 million off of it. Those two, the benefits are 30 percent of what our total personnel expense is. That's a big portion of what the personnel expense might be. Then we have temporary employees, which is a little less than $100,000 out there, and that's simply, we do hire temporary people to do certain types of work. And then if we have key positions, we need to have people in, we may bring them as a temporary, as we're trying to get all their background work taken care of, because that may take a month or two to get some of that taken care of. So we bring them in on that before they're actually full-time types of people. So that comes down to our $98.8 million there. We talk about our major operating expenditures. We've got, in the sheriff's office and probably most of the other constitutionals, 46 different line items and types of expenses. Nine of them that we see here make up 79 percent of our budget. Naturally, the fuel is by far the highest that we've got. We end up using roughly 685,000 gallons of fuel for the patrol cars, and unleaded, if you will, every year off of it. That does not include the fuel that we have for aviation, the marine unit, or the diesel. We add that into it, that's about 774,000 gallons that we use on an annual basis. So you can see, as fuel changes, that's a big impact to us off of it. If it goes down, we're good. If it goes up, not so good off of it. And so that's, that's a part of, the big part of that. The $1.6 million for jail food and supplies is flat. You gave us $175,000 last year to help increase on the jail food, and we're seeing, even now, our population continues to increase into the jails, numbers higher than what we had last year. Maintenance agreements, that's a hard one, because maintenance agreements, we're able to keep that flat, but we're all going to new technology, and what happens when we go to new technology, the subsequent year, you normally have to pay a maintenance contract off of things. So we're constantly beating on trying to keep those costs down and going back on the maintenance agreements, finding ones that maybe we don't need as much anymore and that we can eliminate. So for next year, we've got it flat. Our insurance is all of our liabilities, types of insurances and property insurances that we've got that we pay on our behalf. In the years, the last like five years, that cost has been going down a little bit each year. This year, it went up $68,000 for some. It's, like I said, in like five years, it's going back up. So hopefully, that's not a trend, but we had to take that into account. Our communications expense that we have, like would be the air cards or things such as our cell phones and so forth off of that. We've got it flat, but we were fortunate, this year, we renegotiated a contract, and we saved a little bit for next year, but the important thing is that we were able to get nearly $100,000 in concessions and credits this year on our cell phones themselves. So I don't know whether we'll be able to do that for next year, but we were able to use that for some things that were unbudgeted. Vehicle repairs, $600,000, going up a couple hundred thousand dollars on that. We've got all the, you know, everybody knows that the Crown Vixen went away, and we've got all these Caprices out there, the new Caprices. We've got a little over 100 Caprices. And when we first got these, they come from the factory with a two-year maintenance. So we take them back to the dealership, they do the maintenance, the oil maintenance and change and stuff on that for us, and we didn't have to pay that. Well, virtually all of them are coming outside of that, so we're starting to have to pay some more on that. The other important thing is that people don't realize is that on these vehicles, these tires, I spend nearly $230,000... tires, I spend nearly $230,000 a year on tires. Now, a lot of that simply is the fact, you're on the road all the time, we're driving over eight million miles a year off of it, but when they get a flat, we don't just go and put a little plug in that, we replace the tire, because it's a, a safety issue off of it. So we're looking currently to see if there's a way that we can try to sell some of these tires to some, some other, without having the liability associated with us. And that money there again, would come back to y'all. You know, it wouldn't be money for us, anything we can save off that. We did about a year and a half ago, put in a, an alignment machine, so when they come in for maintenance, at least it looks and says is the car in alignment. If it's not, then we can send it over to the dealership or somebody to have it aligned to try to save and cut down that cost. It's a tremendous cost to us. Used to be able to use some of those tires on the admin, but the Caprice-sized tires don't fit in our admin vehicles. So that doesn't help us any. Professional services remain flat off of that. Some of those professional services type things, there's work being done on the aviation unit, could be legal types of costs in there. Rental property, the D3 from 200,000 to 500,000, that's the pay for the lease of that new location. And then the uniform expense is staying flat where we've got now. Though we are going to have, we're talking about getting some other, in lieu of things that's happened recently, some more vests for our deputies out there, some better vest off of it. So that's going to be a cost that we're going to be looking at closely off of that, that we'll have to find a way to pay for. So like I said, we have 46 different types of expenses. These are nine, at least two and a half million dollars for the rest of it, to be spread out off of that. So we're staying pretty much flat from that. And this is just a chart that shows, this does not have labor in it. So, you know, don't be jumping in saying, hey, I know we've given you people and labor costs have gone off it. This is strictly looking at, the green line is what our expense is over the, since 2012. The blue line is the expense and capital put together, because sometimes we flip-flop on those. We may reduce expense, we may increase the, the capital off of it, depending upon what our needs are during the year as we do our budgets for the next budget cycle off of it. You can see the, the 13, we dropped here in 2013 to 13 million, three forty-eight, and most of that was because we took a hard look at what our lease vehicles are, and we backed off a lot of the lease vehicles. Also, we looked at reducing some of the herds out of the jail, so we saved a lot of farm expense off of that. It jumped back up in 13, six, 13, six forty-five in 2014, mainly it was to buy more cars. Remember in 2009, 2010, we were hurting so bad, the sheriff, like everybody else, had to cut $5 million out of his budget. And a lot of that, we did get rid of some people and eliminate positions, but a lot of it, we cut the capital programs for the radios and the cars off of it. So that's what jumped in. Since then, it's been somewhat flat. The, you can see in 2016, the current one, that's $175,000 that you gave us for the food. And then for 2017, the eight deputies, the expense associated in there. Our capital expenditures side for what we've got in there, we're looking at replacing 26 vehicles for next year, that's 1.1 million dollars off of it. All of those vehicles got 107 to 130,000 miles on it. We really could stand to replace another 16 vehicles off of it, but we just don't have the money to stay within the budget at the moment to get that. We have the eight vehicles for the new, the new deputies off of there. We have used vehicles, meaning our undercover vehicles, we rotate them, we trade some in, we buy some other used vehicles, and so the money associated with that. The, the 1.1, the 0.3, and the other, other 0.1, that's 1.5 million dollars for automobile vehicles that we have. The thing that we also have to work within that budget is that as we, believe it or not, we sometimes have total vehicles out there. And just like if you were to get in your car and get in a wreck, and your car is $40,000, the insurance company's going to take the depreciation in, into account off of it, and maybe they give you $20,000 for the vehicle. I got to come up with that difference in order to pay for a brand-new vehicle, because I don't get that gap in there off of it. I don't have gap insurance, in other words, off of it. So we have to pay for those off it. Last year, we ended up total, and they're not always our, our fault, but total six vehicles. So far this year, we've totaled seven vehicles. One of them was a brand-new Caprice almost, that ended up getting into a wreck with 17,000 miles on it. So that's going to be a big hit that we'll have to pay for off of it. So the replacement in-car computers that we're looking at, there's 40 of those, and it's a little less than $200,000 for that. And sometimes I get people to come up and say, hey, you know, these computers are a little over $4,000 apiece. I can go to Best Buy or Office Depot and buy a computer for six, seven, those aren't, those aren't computers. They're ones that are case-hardened types of computers that can take the rough duty for three and four years in a vehicle and also handle the heat and sometimes the cold at times, but mainly the heat off of it to stand up to that. The new deputies, the radios, we got to give them mobile and portable radios. We're having a replacement, we're replacing 30 mobile radios and 10 portable radios and the other 200,000. And then Miss Lane's replacement of equipment, we've got dive team equipment we have to do, and we also have to replace, one of my favorites is the K9s, we're going to have to replace one of them that we'll also be retiring, so we have to replace one of those.
Is everybody leaving us?
And then we have some boat motors. And then there's a little bit of software for the One Solution and some antivirus that we have to buy and a, a patch management type of software that needs to be purchased. So that gives us our 2.3 million dollars off of it. Now, one of the things we talk about here is that the salary increase, the 4%, this is how this 4% breaks down, is that it's, the salary itself is 2 million, four sixty-one, five forty-six. Our FRS is 459, two thirty-eight, which composite is 18.7%, if you will, off of the numbers there. The FICA, 188, three oh nine, which gives me the 3 million, one oh nine, oh ninety-three. And one of the things I took a look at, you know, everybody's saying that we need to change the, our starting salary, not the starting salaries, but everybody's, the minimum wage to $15 an hour. So I took a look at our people, our civilian people off of it. 30% of our civilian employees make less than $15 an hour off of it. So if that goes to $15 an hour, then that's going to be an impact to us. I have some people that's making less than $12 an hour off of it. So, you know, that 15 is $31,200. So that was even a little bit surprising to me when I did that off of it. So let's take it like the sheriff had talked about here. We do this chart every year off of it, which says, what is everybody else around us paying on a starting salary of a deputy? Now, just to remind you that we take and normalize it. Our deputies work 2,236 hours a year. Most of the others work 2,080, some of them work 2,184 hours. We take and normalize that, everything to the 2,00236. Then we take into account the pension, because, you know, you can see, most of them are 3%. But a lot of the cities, they have anywhere, let's take Tampa PD, they have a high starting salary, but their pension adjustment is $12, I mean, 12.58%. Now, it's been as low as 10, it's been as high as 16. So it fluctuates, and it doesn't stay, you know, steady off of it, same thing in some of the others. So we take that out in order to get a net salary to see where we fall out. We've always been in the top half. Now, with the top of the, the third quartile here, we dropped from number eight to number nine this time. All right? And one of the things that we have found out in doing this, my counterpart in Clearwater PD, they're going, October 1st, they're going to get, change their starting salary by 4%. Not just everybody gets a 4%, their starting salary itself is going up 4%. So what that does, when you do the calculation, it puts them at 47,700. They're going to be at the top for a brief moment, till everybody else is also going to be giving raises, but the point is, they're going to be in the top quartile now. So whether people decide to go there or not, the sheriff talked about the 1.7 million dollars that you gave us in order to fix compression, and then the other 3 million dollars to start moving people to market, and then the other threes. And we did that over a three-year period of putting people pretty much where they need to be. So this is something that you're going to have to continue to look at, because you don't want to get back in that situation again and spend all that money in order to fix the problems that we've had in the past off of it. Now, the other thing that I've, I've done, which was kind of timely, if you will, our consultant that we use is Management Advisory Group. On June the 3rd, we got our, our book from them as to what they say our salary should be. Back in February, before we knew any of this sort of stuff going on, I asked them, before I leave, I want you to go through and take a look at all of our job descriptions, compare them to other agencies. I want you to look at our salary plan, see if it's still in, in good shape, if it needs to be modified, whatever it may be, and then come back to us with suggestions as what you think it should be. All right? This is what they came back at a very high level, and I say high level, there's 400 and something pages here, of where they, they take a look at, not only, they don't look at across the board types of thing, they look at each and every employee and says, all right, this is how much the marketplace is, how many days, not years, days, you've been in a particular job. And then they use a factor to that to find out what your position should be, what you should be making. Certified positions, they're saying that overall to market should be a 5.63% currently. And that kind of bears out, when we looked at that chart a while ago, we dropped down some. That's, that would be 2.8 million dollars with FICA and FRS. The civilians overall to market, 4.62%, $823,000, which says $3.6 million. Now, that would bring us to the 2016 level salaries, as they were out there surveyed in February, March, and April timeframe off of it. So getting that type of money, everybody else is going to be giving more raises in October, and so that would put us behind. They're saying an overall, their suggested increase, and I'm just telling you what the thing that, there's a 5% overall type of increase. So let's say you got a 5%, we're giving 4, that's, puts us one behind. If everybody else gets 4, we still stay 5 off of it. That's just something that you need to know, you know, it's not like we have a lot of money laying around, but we've done this study now that puts us back to say, where are we and why do we need the money off of it? And that, you know, like I said, there's 400 pages worth of stuff here, name by name off of it. The other thing that we have to deal with, too, as you well know, most of you, is that most of the other agencies have step plans. We don't have step plans. The ones that have step plans are mainly unions, so they get the step plan, plus they get the COLA on top of that. So those are the things that we're fighting, and one reason why we'll probably continue to drop a little bit at a time. Sheriff talked about this, we talk about the, the population, 341,405, I know the population numbers are different. We use the CAFR, that's our bible. So we, we take that and use that from 2005 to 2015, shows the 13.7% increase in the call for service, what the sheriff had alluded to. That's a 97% increase off of it, over 1,000 calls for service. For the 16,553, that's another 59 calls for service per deputy per year off of it, that if you just divide into the ones we have on the road, that's running back and forth for calls for service. They don't have much time to do any proactive, and they're just running from one spot to the next. And you can see here that virtually, based off the numbers, everybody in Manatee County is calling us at least one time during the year. And I know that's not what's happening, but, you know, based off of the numbers itself off of it. And I put this chart that, in here, that Mr. Hunzucker loves this chart. And it's the FBI data that the sheriff talked about. Our current ratio is 1.86, last year is 1.90. Now, it dropped simply because we didn't add any deputies last year, and we, the population grew. So mathematically, that's what's going to happen off of it. Using the city national average, the 2.2, which is actually the lowest one, and there again, we, like we talked about a year or two ago, the city average doesn't have bailiffs in their numbers or some warrants. We have those in our numbers, which would make us even, you know, need more if we took those out like we should. But it says the 92 new deputies, the county average of 2.6 would say 199. And then we only get into the South Atlantic region, says you'll need over 300 people off of it. So I know one of the questions is probably, all right, well, we're giving you eight, where does that put you? Does it help you out? Well, that puts us with eight more, with, with the current population, with 1.89. So we're still below what it was for last year off of it. So this is just to let you know that we do need staffing from what he talked about. And before we get into the, the questions portion of it, the one thing I wanted to say is that when Jim Seifert left, I knew that was going to be some really tough shoes to fill. Jan has done a fantastic job of doing that. I appreciate, we don't always agree, but we always find common ground. And to use one of her favorite things, she does an awesome job for us. I've appreciated working with you every day.
I have to say, I, the feeling is mutual. Very much a professional, very much, the man is very good at his job, keeps me on my toes. I've enjoyed it immensely. He's a pleasure to work with, and, and we're going to miss him. Neil, you got some big shoes to fill.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it, but I'm going to miss you terribly, Tom. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more item for you, and it is the money that we will save in this current budget. And as you know, by Florida state statute, I must return all of our unused money at the end of the budget year. And I hope you'll also recall that since I've been sheriff, we've returned over a million dollars every year. The last six years, the board has returned those savings to me so that we could operate. And I have to tell you, we're very grateful for that. I've spoken to Mr. Hunzucker, and he has assured me that we will indeed be able to use that money again this year. Tom and I don't know how much that's going to be yet, because it's a little bit too early. But again, we're going to take half of that money and put it into the account that Mr. Hunzucker established two years ago for the helicopter. And then we'll use the rest of that, as we have in the past, to make ends meet. That helicopter fund currently stands at 1,491,216. So we'll take any questions you have.
We have several here. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff, on your compression, you had mentioned on your raise, what you've been doing, on your sworn deputies, have you been giving them more in raises to get them up to par?
Yes.
Okay. So if, instead of the top brass?
One year, the supervision, and I can't remember, Tom probably does, I don't remember the, the breakout, but those on the lower end got more money, those in the middle got less, and those higher up got even less.
Okay, so you went from bottom up to less? Okay. I had emailed your document dealing with Walmart. The study in the Tampa Bay Times had, they had a study showing that law enforcement spent a good percentage of their time going to Walmarts with petty crimes, tying up deputies and police officers. There was two stores that took place, and I know in Hillsborough County and City of Tampa, and other jurisdictions, they found out that it was bringing havoc on calls in the neighborhood of a million dollars a year. Have you had a time to look at that study that took place to see how many service calls that you have to the unincorporated area of Walmart? I see you have caused a 13.7% increase. It was kind of soon.
No, we actually have looked at it. In fact, before you sent me that article, a year ago, Captain Rick Gurkin, who's here today, has had a conversation with those folks at Walmart. We've had our crime prevention people there, and we're well aware of the problem. The city of Palmetto, when that one opened up, their crime skyrocketed because of what was going on. So yes, we're very aware of it.
Were you dealing with that, Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, you're right, city of Palmetto's own skyrocketed, and it ran away business.
Yes, it did.
What took place. Okay, I'm glad to hear that, that you're, you're on top of that. The deputies that you're talking about, you mentioned last year, I know that you needed another patrol unit. I believe you mentioned north of the river. I don't think we funded it, but you was asking for deputies for north of the river to have another patrol unit over there. These new deputies that you're talking about now, is that to give more deputies time to get off, or are you looking to do another patrol district, or what's your situation on that?
These eight deputies, we actually haven't sat yet, because really, it's too early. I don't really know what you all are going to approve. We haven't sat yet to determine where they're going to go. And if you're talking about opening up the new patrol district in North District and East District, that is something that's probably several years still away. The big thing that needs to be funded with that is supervision. Technically speaking, if you take a map of a county right now, and the deputies that are assigned to those areas in the county, you could actually take them and make a new district. But unfortunately, there's, they would be lacking a patrol captain, four lieutenants, I'm thinking off the top of my head, but probably 12 sergeants. So all of that supervision would be needed before we could actually do that.
Okay, I have some more questions, but I'm going to yield to my colleagues and then come back, sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Banack.
Yeah, thank you for, once again, coming before us and laying it all out. I think it is very helpful to have all of the information. I do have some questions. The roughly 11.5 million that I heard laid out over the last four years, that has all gone to salary increases, or have there been any additional deputies? And I added that up. I heard 1.5, I heard three, I heard three, and then I heard three. That's where I came up with that number. Those are all salary increases. Have there been any increase in number of deputies over the last four years?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Not last year.
Not last year, no. Right, not last year, but in the last four years.
Four.
Yes.
Do you know roughly how many?
We have that. If you'll give us a second, we'll find that piece of paper.
And I think it was last year when you were trying to apply for a grant that would be helpful with some deputies, but it didn't pan out, as I recall.
In 2013, 2014, we added eight law enforcement positions and four corrections deputies. And then 1415, we got two more law enforcement deputies because there was $175,000 that Mr. Seifert was going to give us for like cops grant. The cops grant didn't happen, so we took that money and used it for two more law enforcement deputies. There were two of the law enforcement for SROs in the middle school, and those were the ones that Mr. Hunzucker talked about earlier. It was supposed to have been 50/50, they were paying 100% of it. And we got four corrections deputies and an MTI or SRO for that. So, those are the ones, and we didn't add any in 1516 or this year, so.
Okay, so we've had an additional eight correction officers over the last three years?
Right, since 2013, 14, right.
And you had indicated that you weren't sure of the eight that has been proposed, whether any of those would be correction officers at this time?
I'm not sure where we're going to put them yet.
Okay. Because the correction officers is something that has been an issue every year that I've been up here listening to at the jail, and I'm just trying to get a handle on, you know, how many, you said we had 95, 217, then we're at 224 today. So, again, just trying to figure out how we're, it is something that I've heard that is a need, that we need more correction officers. So, I don't know how you make that decision, whether or not to have them on the road or to increase.
That's the big decision, Commissioner, that I have to make.
Okay.
And I will make it.
Okay. Something else I wanted to just clarify, on the public records, I heard you say that you needed to provide summaries of all of these public records, and I'm, we've been told, we don't have to summarize anything, we just give straight data, and we charge for that straight data. Any duplication charges, anything that we have to recreate, we're able to charge. I assume you're charging
We are.
To the full extent to recoup the cost of providing that data.
We are. And we do have, you don't have to produce a record that you don't have. We already have summaries that they're asking for.
Okay.
Just takes the time.
Okay, so you do have the summaries. It's just something that you already have as a public record, so you have to give it, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. The other thing, as you know, we are always given information that's slightly is different than yours in terms of the data on the number of law enforcement. We always are given the information from the Federal Department of Law Enforcement, which is different. Can you tell me again why you prefer to use the FBI data rather than the federal, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement?
Because I'm comparing apples to apples here with the FBI ratios, and I don't understand. You tell me which county you're comparing me to with the FDLE statistics.
Okay, well, we're given data that shows the officers ratio, per ratio, Manatee County being at 1.27, MSO officers per thousand, Sarasota's at 1.26, Charlotte's at 1.27, Lee at 1, Collier at .87, Hillsborough at 1.25, Pinellas at 1.61, Pasco at .96. So, that is the ratios that come from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. And comparing that to Manatee County's at 1.27, it seems like we're right in the ballpark.
One of the main issues, and we can provide that same information back to you again, but one of the main things is that people that's working in the corrections, a corrections deputy, if he's got a law enforcement certification and a corrections, and he's not working on the road, they count him as working on the road.
That's figured into those statistics.
Right. And so, that skews the thing. With the FBI, we actually report how many are law enforcement on the road kind of people. So, it's an apples to apples. The other can be skewed all over the place off of it, and that's why we can't use those particular numbers.
And even by doing what we use, as Tom said earlier, we're giving you all the certified law enforcement officers, not the ones that are necessarily out there answering the calls for service, but we're adding bailiffs, we're adding people in civil, we're adding all of them in there. So, this is the most conservative number that we can use.
And the other thing, I just want to make sure, on the chart that you showed us, and it was roughly 42, I can't remember what the number was and where we were, that did not include the proposed salary increase, right? But as you said, other places are getting salary increases as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure when I was looking at it, that I understood.
Right, if we add the 4% on to it, it puts us back up to where we were, but that's before everybody else gets their increases also.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I'm on the board next. Sheriff, you sent a letter to all the commissioners, April the 29th, you know, with your budget, what you were asking for this year. And one of the things that you put in there was a paragraph about the school resource officers. And you stayed in the letter, and I realize this is back in April, but at the time, you hadn't heard anything from the school board as far as whether or not they had funds available, et cetera. I'm assuming by now you have heard, is, do?
They do not have any funds for additional school resource officers.
Okay. So, did they by chance talk to you guys about applying for grants that had to be done by May the 15th?
Well, we
Do you know?
We actually did that.
Yeah, I talked and called over and talked to Troy Nelson, who's the security person, several times off of it. He talked to Dr. Gray, Green, and he said, they don't have any money for it. And I said, well, we've got a grant that we could go out after, and I got a grant person that's sitting there and had a lot of the data together to go forward off of it. And actually, before we sent all of that out, I called and asked again, and that's why the sheriff wrote that in there, to say, we've been trying. And even Jan and I had talked about it off of it, said, you know, what else can we do in order to try to save money, because it's my taxpayer dollars too, off of it. But we haven't heard anything else back from him. I think the sheriff had talked, and they said, yeah, they didn't have any money at a later date.
And we were pushed to a deadline by that point, so.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. I figured by now perhaps you'd heard something, since I know the grants had to be done by May the 15th in order to hit the deadlines, as you put in your letter. That's what I was curious about. So, do we know whether or not the school board has put that in their budget?
Do you know if the school board?
The school board has put their half, their dollars in their budget, and they requested us to put this dollar in our budget.
So, they did?
Yes.
So, they put theirs in?
They just didn't respond. That was rude.
Okay, that was rude. One more thing, and I've got a lot of just different things that I've written down that, you know, I think is very interesting. I was going to ask about the FDLE, so I was glad that Betsy brought that up. The capital expenditures, some of that can be paid with impact fees, is that correct? Not all, but some.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, all the new deputies that's on that chart,
Right.
They could be paid for with impact fees.
But how about the computers that you were talking about? You can't buy?
Yeah, the computers we can buy for that, too. The computers and the radios, the mobiles and the portables, anything that's over $1,000 associated with it. So, it's all the car, an outfit, the car, the computers, the radios, and the, both radios, if you will.
Okay.
Will all impact fee dollars. I think it's 387 or something like that.
Okay. And then, you know, I know that the crime rate is so far still down, and I don't know how you guys do it, and I just wanted to bring that up because I don't think a lot of people in Manatee County realize that, you know, that the sheriff's department has managed to keep our crime rate down, and it seems like every year, we're seeing it go down a little bit. So, I just wanted to bring that up and say a good job.
Thank you.
On the sheet of paper that you gave us, number one, number two, and number three, I want to make sure that I understand. To get the four additional correction deputies, six dispatchers, one public records clerk, and two forensic analysis, it would run approximately, you're saying 796,000? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's over and above what the county administrator had already approved for your budget?
Correct.
So, I'm sitting back, and I'm looking at eight school resource officers that I don't feel like we should pay. I mean, their budget is larger than ours. I think they should be able to cover their expenses and not look to the county to do that, but maybe I'm missing something there? I don't know.
It has always been a 50/50 proposition, as long as I can remember, there being school resource deputies, and that goes back 25 years.
I just find that amazing when their budget is so much more than ours.
Well, and in the down times, back when Tom was saying that they paid, they ended up paying for two or three at 100%, and then at the middle school level, they were paying for like four or five at 70%. And all they're asking now is to go back to the 50/50 split.
So, I'm assuming that you're in agreement with that, Sheriff?
I'm not, I don't have a dog in this fight. This is between the county and the school board. I just provide the bodies.
You get your money for it from somewhere.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I guess it doesn't matter where it comes from. There was one other thing. Give me a second here. I think it was interesting and possibly helpful that the supervisor of elections was right before you, because, you know, he's telling us that he's going to be sending back 1.7 million. Thought that was interesting.
Already spent it.
Yeah, right, I'm sure we did. Right. So, we're looking at an additional 796,000, 797,000 to get you where you feel you need to be, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, let's see what happens. Commissioner Whitmore.
Sheriff, the presentation you gave at the beginning was good, and I like to have, I got a file. Can I have a copy of that? Because you had a lot of good information, I couldn't write it down fast enough.
Oh, you nail it to you.
Thanks. That's all I got for now.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, dealing with those resource officers, if we're going to, I know you talked about red flagging those, but we're going to fund them this year, certainly I hope that someone reach out and verify with the school board what the situation is. I don't think we need a joint meeting with the school board to just basically say we're not going to continue funding that portion of Manatee County government. As the chair has pointed out, school board has way more funds than we do, and to continue doing things as we have continued to do is what we're in this situation today. So, for future budgets, and maybe this one, I definitely will not be supporting Manatee County government paying half the salaries of eight school resource officers. As the sheriff mentioned, it's been doing it for quite a few years. I think the school board should budget that in their budget. I don't know what we can do this year. Certainly, if we can do something this year, I will look at not supporting the resource officers, but however, if it's too late to deal with it this year, I guess I would have to support it, but I don't think we need a joint meeting to make that decision, at least I don't. You had mentioned in overtime, $3.8 million in overtime pay, and I believe you mentioned about parades and things like that, that you have to provide security for.
Right, sometimes they'll pay for some deputies, but in order for us to have the others, we'll have to provide deputies out there for that. And then, most of the time, like the DeSoto parade, we try to use captains, majors, those types that I don't have to pay them any overtime associated with, there's not enough of them to be able to do all that. And the regattas and stuff, any of those, any types of special types of things that we have to go out there, and a lot of times, we can't take them off the road, so we have to use some on overtime. We'll take somebody else that's off and have them come in and work and do overtime off of it. Even the ones out at, what's Coquita Beach? Coquita Beach? I always pronounce it wrong.
On the holidays, Coquita Beach, we have a large contingency of deputies, and the majority of them are not on duty, so it's overtime.
Does the DeSoto celebration do application with your department on X number of law enforcement officers?
No. We know what positions we need to staff with the parade route, and we do that what we feel is adequate.
How much do they pay for your deputies?
The DeSoto celebration pays nothing for our deputies.
Wow.
Which, I'm asking that question because the Mardi Gras needed deputies, and they couldn't have it. And there was no volunteerism there. And I don't
Well, they could have it, Commissioner, because we had over 100 deputies up at the Mardi Gras every year, and they paid for a few, as I recall.
I think, yeah, for maybe, you know, I mean
Actually, I had heard that as well.
Well, I kind of know a little what they actually was paying, and it wasn't anything. DeSoto get a better deal than the Mardi Gras, certainly from that standpoint. When we deal with festivals, I understand public support and law enforcement support, but there's the application process that normally takes place, and I know even from what we did in Palmetto, we normally use Palmetto, and then the sheriff does provide protection for that King Festival also. I just wanted to ask that question with the overtime. These deputies that you're talking about, the additional ones, I know the county administrator is basically recommending eight, is that correct?
Uh huh.
And you're asking for additional eight? For road patrol?
No.
Correction deputies.
I'm asking for that sheet that I handed out to you, number three.
Right.
Four corrections deputies, six dispatchers, one public records clerk, and two forensic analysts.
Okay, I'm looking at what our administrator gave us previous to you hand that out, and I think he was recommending additional eight, what you need over and beyond that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get to that point, because here's this conflict with yours. And the amount that you're asking for is 796, 741, over and beyond what he's recommending.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DeSabatino.
Thank you, Sheriff. DeSabatino. Yes, thank you for coming today. You know how I feel about you and your department, and we meet several times a year, and I really appreciate that, and you give me a heads up of what's going on. I send an email, make a call, you return it within seconds, hour the most. I need something down in South County, and you're there, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And I feel if I pick up the phone and I dial 911, you're going to be there. I hope that this board commits to giving you back your excess budget, and I think I heard that you said the county administrator has agreed to that. I just want to make sure that that's on the record. The unused amount you always give back, basically, the county property appraiser gave back his, so that's the same. I really appreciate your budget. I read, and I think I forwarded you last week, about Sheriff Knight was short, 6 million this year. He was asking for six more than he was being allocated, so he's gone to task for that. And usually each year, you give us how many more households you all have to protect with the same amount of people, or, so you're protecting more people with less resources, basically. And I'm not here to micromanage your budget whatsoever. You're the experts in this, you've been in this, I've never held a gun or held that position. So, I'm here to support you and your team. As far as the school board, that's between us, but we're here to tell you that when there's money not there, then they cut back on it. And we need school resource officers in the schools, and not every school has them. They have to share. So, even what we're allocating is still probably half of what we really need, because if you have an incident at one school and the officers, they've got to, you know, go to a different school. And, you know, that our children are at stake, and so, you know, whatever the school board and the county works out, that's on us. So, basically, I'm a really, I say this all the time, I'm a, tell me the time, don't bill me the watch person. And so, the amount of money that you need to get by on that's short is only the 796,000, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'd like to, I guess we flag this? I don't know if I have a second to flag this to
I'm sorry to flag.
Okay, good, I'm glad. And so, we need to either find this in the current budget, or 796,000, I'm just humor me and going along. If we had to, if we can't find it elsewhere in the budget, and that means adding it on to the ad valorem, it wouldn't be that whole much, and I think we've done figures before, and equates to peanuts per household per year, correct?
Well, I don't want to say peanuts, but we've done that math and sent that to, Jan may even have it right there in front of her, I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, I've asked for that.
We sent it, I don't have it, I can put it...
Okay, so, just say 1 million, just say 1 million, what does 1 million equate to? Millage, and then per household of a family?
And that's available, we can get that to you, I know Jan has it.
Do we have that?
She's trying to figure it out.
Okay, so, that's all I have to say, because I've said this before, whenever I go out to my neighborhoods in South County, and I see some folks here from South County, and I give them that scenario, and I said, you know, if it's gonna cost you 10, 15 dollars more a year, a household, to have more deputies on the ground, would you go for that? And they're all raising their hands, because the amount of money, if they get burglarized, is way more than that, to take care of their home and the things to be replaced in an invasion. And so, they really value when they see your cars riding around, and they feel that they're more safe, and, you know, the more you see those cars riding around, the more peace and assurance that you have. And just headlined yesterday with Sergeant Kenyon, and he's been working with me down in Bay Shore area and Whitfield for traffic controlling and so forth, and so whenever I pick up the phone and call or email any of your guys, thank you so much for being there, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Benak, just one question, because the issue of the school resource officers was brought up, and I do recall the school board had some hiccups about hiring private deputies, and I assume because they didn't have the resources for school resource officers, I can't remember, I just remember it was a big deal.
Well, and it's interesting that you mention that, it wasn't private deputies, it was private security.
Security.
Which they could get at a lesser amount of money. But when we were talking, and this has been a couple of years ago, when we were talking about that, the money that they had, they could've given that money and gone 50/50 with you all again, and gotten back the five SROs that we had at the elementary school level initially, before those were cut in a budget. And had they gone back to that then, they wouldn't have gone through the private security and all that mess, and we'd have five elementary school SROs right now. And I understand that, you know, there are probably over 40 elementary schools, and that they would have to share, but to me, at the schools, some is better than none.
Yeah.
So, that's what I recall of that.
Yeah, and that's why, I mean, we're talking about, and I don't know if the school board is doing this because they think that we'll give half the funding, if it means if we didn't give half the funding, if they wouldn't happen, but let's say that was a scenario, that the school board could not afford these SROs if we didn't provide half the funding. That would be roughly, according to what I see here, actually, I just lost my place, it would be 400 and some thousand dollars, so that would be able to pay for, for example, correction deputies. If you had to make that call, which would you rather have, SROs or the correction deputies?
Oh, I'm not gonna answer that.
I knew he wasn't gonna do it.
I'm not gonna answer that.
Yeah.
I already made that hard call. When I had to cut 5 million dollars out of my budget, I made that hard call, I cut SROs.
Okay.
With the blessing of the school board, because we were in hard times.
Yeah.
So, I've made that call.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Sheriff, I brought this up last year, dealing with the lack of lights in the community, and, you know, and people say, Commissioner, you bring this up, but you gotta understand, you probably only commission up after 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock at night, and ride around in your community. That's what they're telling me. And I see your deputies parked for maybe an hour or two hours, trying to deter someone from selling drugs all night long, raviching the community, they have to park there and deter people because they can't see. And I said it last year, and I said it this year, I think it jeopardize your deputies, because if they ever get in altercation out there in the dark, most of the people that know the community better than them, what ad is to run, even if they wanna take a shot at someone, they're just send targets, in my opinion. And so, I asked you this question last night, between law enforcement and lights are public safety issue, and my question to you, and it takes a deputy off the road, because they'll get one phone call, somebody complained that somebody under the tree, the deputy have to sit there and monitor that tree, guys hanging out there going back and forth. What can we do to keep more deputies patrolling, and I'm talking about Mason, north of the river, where I see this taking place, in certain pockets where Palmetto State's area, because we've had break-ins and so forth at nights, and the lack of lighting. How can we better improve the quality of life dealing with lights in those pocket areas where your deputies have to be out there with no visual lighting that takes place?
And again, as you said last year, it's a great point. We try to encourage our deputies that, let's say, for instance, you go and take a burglary report, but you haven't written it yet, you've gotten all the information from the victim, we always tell them, okay, go sit in front of a location where they're either dealing drugs, or maybe people are speeding, so that it gives the appearance that even though you have your head down and you're typing away on your computer, what do you do when you see a police car? You slow down, if it's the speeding. So, it's difficult to tell our deputies to go into a high-crime neighborhood where there's no lights and sit in front of a drug house.
Scary.
Because you know what can happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, yeah, lights would be a great benefit in a number of our neighborhoods.
Yeah, okay, because I'm very concerned about that. I mean, as you look at what takes place in larger cities, even in Orlando, people assume it can't happen here, and they're wrong. You may get a phone call anytime dealing with one of your deputies in a situation, and we, the code enforcement did a great job then cleaning up an alley where the people sell drugs all night long, but when the deputy show up, they know how to get around the alley.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so they understand the community, they understand the back house and roads. Lights deter crime, it makes deputies more safe, and it also make the homeowner more safe, so I've been discussing those issues, and I guess I discussed a lot of things, because I'm up late at night, 12, sometime 1:00 in the morning, it's always been like that. So, I'll ride around sometime, and I see you guys out there doing these different things, and as you mentioned, it's very, in these areas here, which is totally the quality of life and things that are taking place, and most of your responders' calls are taking place in those neighborhoods, I just wanted to raise that issue from that standpoint. And I've said this, and I'll say it again, the fact is that the deterrent of crime that take place in the quality of life in Manatee County, not just north of the river, other pockets that lights would deter that, also make law enforcement more safer. There's a reason why you have a serious issue, you have to bring all the lights to these communities, the light of the neighborhoods, so you can find out what's going on during crime scenes and stuff. I just wanted to put that on the record, and I know this your last year of your budget as a sheriff for Manatee County, and certainly, I hope that my colleagues can support mostly everything that you've asked, and I've been on the forefront, that I really believe that money spent in the community is a lot more cheaper than law enforcement, but however, I don't see any money being spent in the community regardless.
Oh.
So, I'd rather you get the money. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it, Commissioner.
Commissioner DeSabanino.
Oh, yeah, that was, I'd like to, to the subject, and so to speak. If the sales tax passes, then we would have a funding stream for lights and so forth, so I know Commissioner Smith will be first in line.
That's correct.
Asking for that. And I forgot to mention regarding the school resource officers, how, also, how vital they are to our students, because they develop relationships with these officers, and they learn to trust them. And so, that's really important for our little ones to trust law enforcement officers.
I just had three SROs retire within the last couple of months, John Morrell, who's a lieutenant, Johnny Jones, and Greg Jenkins. And at our staff meeting, there was over 75 years of experience as an SRO, nowhere else in the department, but as an SRO. I had the SROs on my float one year at the DeSoto Parade.
Everybody knew.
I'm glad it wasn't an election year, because they were all yelling at the SROs and not me.
Everybody knew.
But they are just, they're amazing people, and they, as you said, they make these relationships with these kids, they generally know when crime is about to occur because of what the information they're receiving, so, yeah, it's important.
And also, speaking with Sergeant Kenyon regarding the crossing guards, that he oversees the crossing guards, and how he needs to maneuver them, and making sure that they're there for the children. So, you know, I just wanna make sure that, and I'm sure my colleagues will agree, that we wanna make sure that you're whole and you have the resources, because, you know, as Commissioner Smith said, you know, we can be in Orlando or Ferguson at any time, and hopefully, we'll never be, but we wanna make sure that, you know, you're equipped to handle it, and there for protection, thank you.
Okay. You know, I'm next on the board. Sheriff, ever since I've been up on this dais, I have supported you every year to increase your budget, because I felt like that with the population that was, the way we were growing, that you did need more for your budget to sustain the increase in the population. I'm not trying to take away from the SROs, I know that it's very important to have them in our schools, I don't take away from that. What I do feel, however, is I'm wondering why, when we're still in a pinch, and we know that come 18, we're in a jam, we need to be looking at how we can cover the priorities that we have in our budget, and all the other departments and schools and everybody else that has their budgets, they need to do the same. It's not always something where the county can come up and, you know, come to the rescue, so to speak, or even maybe continue to do what we've done in the past. We have to look and come up with what our priorities are, and obviously, you know, your department has priority, it always has. I mean, law enforcement, we can't do without you, we need you, and it's a miracle that I think you've kept the crime rate down. You know, the county administration, you know, Jan, they've worked very hard to come up with a good balanced budget for us, I think they've done a great job. I admire them, but that doesn't mean that I always agree with everything that they come up with. If that was the case, it wouldn't come before the county commission at all, they would just approve it themselves. So, that being said, you know, we did flag the increase in the money for you to instruct the administration to figure out how to come up with that cost, it's something that we wanna look at as soon as, I'm not even sure when it comes back before us. Jan, do you know when that might be done?
Yes, ma'am, you have to have an information to give into the property appraiser by August 4th, for the term notice.
Okay.
So, it will come back in a reconciliation. August 2nd is the next workshop, where we'll come back, a list of flagged items for you to go through and reconcile how you want to handle them.
Okay. You know, and to finish up, the schools are very, very important, they're our children, they're our future, and we need to work with the schools every way that we possibly can. I thought Commissioner Benak asked a very good question, you know, Sheriff, if you had to choose, what would you choose? And I understand why you didn't want to really have to answer that question, but you did say that when we were in a bind, and you were in a bind, you chose the deputies, because you knew that was gonna give more protection to the county as a whole. So, you know, I look forward to perhaps, you know, the county administrator getting with the school board, or the school administrator, and seeing if there isn't some way that we can work some things out, but I do think that we need to try and make sure that you have what you need to take care of the county, so. That being said, Commissioner Chappie?
Yeah, a couple things. The good news is, everybody jumped to flag it.
Yeah.
So, we all think there's some, a lot of room here, we want the administrative staff to go back and talk over this stuff with you, and hopefully, we can come up with a better solution to what your issues are here, and the needing of more money to support your men and women that work for you. A couple things I just wanna say, you know, I'll start with Tom, congratulations, and it has been great working with you, and you always present an unbelievably great budget, you know this stuff backwards and forwards, and you've done an amazing job for the people of Manatee County, and it's appreciated big time. And Sheriff, you know, this is your last budget, I would tell you, it's been, it's been a real honor to be up here and have you out there serving the community with the men and women that work in the Sheriff's Department. You've done an amazing job taking over from Charlie Wells, and you didn't lose a step, and it's been greatly appreciated, so I wanna thank you for that.
His wife Debbie's back there in the back.
Yeah, I saw her back there, she hit her head when she leaned back, I saw that. I heard it.
You heard it up here.
But, you know, we still have some great challenges, as we do every year, but with the tremendous growth in the last several years to actually 300, what they're saying, 363,000 residents in Manatee County, permanent residents, that's not counting the increase in the tourism that comes here every year, and that goes up a large amount every year. So, I'm hopeful that we can find a solution to this dilemma here with some dollars. It's not as bad of a situation as we've had in the past, where we've had some battles, so I'm hopeful that we can, we will be able to work this out. But again, I just wanna thank you for your great career in serving the people of Manatee County.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We will miss you. Commissioner Benak? Yeah, I think we all feel that way, that we've had the opportunity to work with you and your staff, and look forward to continuing to work together, because it is very important. I wanna make clear, my question on the SRO was not in any way discredited, I've worked in the schools, my husband was a teacher in a middle school in Sarasota that always had an SRO, so I do know the value of an SRO. SROs also, I know, have been very valuable to help with drug education in the past. We don't formally have a DARE program anymore, but I do know that the SROs were very involved. I don't know whether or not there's ever been any discussion about involving them, again, in drug education, we have a dearth of drug education in our schools. Do you know, is there any discussion about looking again at possibly drug education, prevention education? The DARE program is, we used to have it when my kids were in school.
A number of years ago, they did away with DARE, and we did away with GREAT, Gang Resistance Education and Training, but that was a collaborative effort between the Sheriff's Office and the school board at the time, and I can't tell you, can anybody help me with the name of the program we now have? See, they all know it.
What is it? What was it?
Crossroads.
Oh.
So, it combined both of those programs, but also added some things to it, and that was taught at the elementary and the middle school level, and obviously, we don't have elementary school SROs any longer, so that's an area that needs some assistance as well.
Well, it's, you know, we ask these questions because it's a tough call. We know we've got a limited budget, we don't have unlimited revenues, and I do get people that tell me that you should get absolutely every penny that you ask for, that's the reputation that you have in this community. So, we do hear that, we hear that, you know, I hear that from my constituents, they're very concerned about what's happening out at the jail, about making sure that we have adequate coverage, so it's a big, big issue, and we need to keep up with our growth, and so I would like to know, just kinda percentage-wise, when we do these increases, based on the percentage of growth, percentage of growth in our budget, I'm talking to our, I'll talk to them later, I just would like to know kind of what the percentage growth in the sheriff budget is that we're factoring in based on the percentage growth in our budget, because I do get a lot of questions about that, too, if you understand what I'm saying. Did you get the email that, a week or two ago, where it showed the different years for the sheriff, how much it had gone up percentage-wise in the last four or five years? Did you get that? I had asked, Jan was wonderful at getting it together. Maybe, I don't know. Did we all get it? Did I get it? Okay, I don't remember. I have a stack of emails.
And the majority of those monies and those increases each year was the salary increases.
Yeah. Okay. Because it's, you know, we have limited resources, we have to figure out, you know, yesterday we were in a budget work session for, you know, nine hours, that we heard from everyone about how the compression issue and the ability to, you know, maintain a solid workforce is hurting across many of our agencies, and we know that you guys are frontline, and that was the other question I wanted to ask, because do you foresee, just given the way things are changing, and, you know, we're dealing with a whole different world here now, do you foresee changes moving forward for the sheriff that are gonna impact, given that we're, you know, basically fighting a war on US soil nowadays? Is there anything that you see that will have an impact to your department?
I get briefings from Homeland Security and the FBI regularly, I, we have a number of people in our agency and intel that actually go and attend those briefings as well, and we kinda try to keep up with the trends as we see them. For instance, when the shooting took place in Orlando, my phone was being burned up by the press, asking questions, you know, and they were asking me some questions about, oh, I saw this big armored vehicle on there, and this big, huge command bus. Well, we have those, okay? Even though the President of the United States doesn't think that we should have armored vehicles, we have one, and we use it just about every time that we execute a search warrant, a high-risk search warrant. I can name for you a number of high-risk situations where someone was, had a gun and was barricaded, and we use that, and I will continue to use it, because the safety of our people is more important to me than having a piece of equipment. So, we keep up with it. There are a lot of things that I know about that obviously I can't share. There are a lot of things that I know about that obviously I can't share, but it filters down to our folks. After this happened in Orlando, you know, back in 9/11, we identified a number of targets in our community, the water, the airport, you name it, we've identified them. And we actually have one deputy on every squad, every day, that part of his responsibilities, his or her responsibilities, is to drive around at those locations. They have to check out on the radio at a Homeland Security patrol request. So when this happened, even though we had that, Major Doomer put out information to all the troops that, okay, this has occurred, we need to make sure that everybody is looking at it, not just one deputy on a squad.
Right, right. And the fact that that deputy over there that got shot had a Kevlar helmet, which is not something that-
Have those, too.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes, Madam Chair. What is the, I know we red-flag and everything, but the bottom line, do we have the $796,741?
Not in our budget.
Well, I know it's not in the budget. We ask for it to be flagged to find it, but the bottom line, are we asking the county administrator to cut what we have now to find it, or are we asking for him to go and look into the reserves or whatever it may be to take care of this?
No, we're asking him to find it.
It'd be a reoccurring.
It's recurring.
Reoccurring. It can't come out of reserves.
Okay.
So, we don't have any reserves.
So what's the situation on this? I mean, while we're wasting the sheriff's time, my intention is to support the total amount to be upfront with you.
That's Admiral.
Then we'll see in August.
And there should be some type of motion made contingent on us finding the money. We can't do that.
You flagged the items, and that's what you do at this point in time, and then, as you did with the other items that you flagged, and then on August 2nd, you come back and you look at all the items you flagged and figure out what you want to do with them.
I understand the flag problem.
Well, then.
Commissioner Smith.
Revenue.
Back in August, we will find the money for the sheriff.
In there, from there.
Maybe. Is that it?
Do you know how much that equates to?
She knows. Oh, there's other people on the board.
Commissioner Whitmore, you're on the board.
Thank you. Okay. First of all, congratulations. I'm sure you guys are going to enjoy retirement. There's three of us here in the kind of same graduating class, and others are getting the opportunity, and we're all, you beat two of us here, so congratulations, Sheriff. It's been a pleasure working for you. I've known you since high school, so congratulations. And Tom, good job. You're going to have a hard shoes to fill, as you know, and it's been a really good, it's been a pleasure working with you. I've loved it, and you've been to my office, and I always have loved budgets, so I really enjoyed it. So thanks. The, oh, and I went to Annemarie Elementary, 5th grade graduating class two weeks ago, and they actually have a DARE program, and I guess it's the only one in the county because they were all getting certificates. So Home Speech does have one in their elementary, but I think it's the only one.
I think they actually have their own SRO out there that-
Yeah, they do. The city's paying for it.
Police Department pays for it.
Yeah, the city's paying for it, so that's good. And somebody had mentioned 2008, and 2018, we're in a jam. And then I've heard from citizens, and you know, again, this is the only time we all can talk here about this kind of stuff, but said that poor planning, what are we doing? You know, we should have been figuring this out for the past few years. Well, like in 2009, I guess everybody forgot, we had the worst recession since the Depression, and we were able to not raise property taxes for the last 10 years. And we were able to function as government with the reserves, because when Ed came on, he found a lot of the funds that, as he educated us the other day, that had reserves in them that we could use to survive on until 2018. So that's why we're all doing what we're doing now, because in 2018, we have to find other revenue sources because those reserves are gone. And it's either other revenue sources or increased millage, whatever. So those are the two options that we all have to look for in the future. But when I hear and read that, I just want us, you know, the public to know that watches this on TV, it's not that we haven't sat back and just waited till 2018. We've actually had to lay off 300 people and bite the bullet. Sorry, Sheriff, but, you know, but yeah, but so now it's, now it's the tough time in 2018, so. And so hopefully, we can find the 700,000 somewhere, and that hopefully Ed can figure it out. He seems to pull something out of his hat every year, so we'll see what happens.
All right, Sheriff, I don't have anyone else on the board, so we thank you very much.
Here's my challenge. Every year, I come in here asking for patrol deputies, and every year, I get questions about why do you need them? I challenge you to do a ride-along at one of my districts, not during the day, not with someone that you know, but go sign up and get in one of the rough neighborhoods and do an eight or a 10-hour ride-along. And then you'll see that my deputies run from call to call to call. Some of them don't even get dinner breaks because of that. Don't go out to Lakewood Ranch.
Hey, don't pick at me.
I'm just telling you, it's less than 2% of the crime out there.
I know.
Go out there and get a real taste for what we do, and then you'll come back in here maybe next year, and it won't be me fighting for more deputies, but maybe you'll actually fund 12 new positions, and then you'll continue to do that year after year after year until we finally get to the point where we need to be. That's what I challenge you to do. Now, I did this last year. I don't think any of you came and wrote. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Tom, you will be missed as well, seriously.
We have the clerk of the circuit court here, Angel.
Can I make a comment to what the sheriff just said?
Go ahead. Hold on.
Hold on, Sheriff. I just want to say, I believe, and I will take up your challenge, I believe the last ride-along that I went on-
Was with me?
Was with you when I was in leadership Manatee.
Thirty years ago.
Not that quite long ago. It was a long time.
Hi, Angel. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon. This was the sheriff's.
Madam Clerk, do you need to take a break?
I have to, two of us have to leave at 4:00.
Okay. Go ahead. Sorry, Angel.
Sheriff's last budget and my first budget presentation-
I know.
-to the board. It's ironic, with over 1,000 statutory requirements of our office and functions, I'll probably be the shortest presentation today for you and the briefest. And the good news is that our request is coming in slightly less. Our base request is slightly less than last year. We are requesting $6,896,083, an additional $170,825 to cover 4% salary increase, and an additional $28,818 for a 4% health premium increase, and the total would be $7,95,726. And that is our budget request for this year.
Well, you're another Mike Bennett.
To the point.
Commissioner Benak, are you?
No, I'm done. I want to talk to the sheriff.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes, Madam Clerk, the 4% raise that is being recommended by our county administrator, would that go to increasing the pay of your employees and staff?
Okay, we are a divided house. It would absolutely be allocated for the employees on the board side of the house. We are a divided house, court side and board side, and right now, this summer, there will be discussions about the court side. As you know, and I'm sure you've heard, that the court side is really tight all over the state. So my plan is to give that pay increase if this board approves that 4% pay increase. My plan would be to do that, however, if the court side and the state side does not provide enough for a pay increase, I cannot give a pay increase to half my office and not the other half. We would then give that money back. We're waiting for the State Revenue Committee to provide the clerk of courts operating corporation with a figure for all the clerks. It'll go to that budget committee. They will dispense those funds and disperse them to each clerk according to what they are presented with this summer. We won't have that figure until the end of this, closer to the end of the summer for our court side. But right now, we are asking for that 4% salary increase in the hope that we can keep the pace with the county.
Wow.
Okay, see, I'm glad, that's why I wanted the public presentation, because, see, I'm learning something about the budget process, even from you, even from the property appraiser, because the 16 months I've been here, I was told kind of opposite, well, they can do this and do that, and you're saying, no, not necessarily. You got to make sure everything is raised, going across the board. Even the property appraiser said, well, no, it'd be hard for us to get raised from Tallahassee if it's not here. I appreciate you coming and giving a presentation, and my thing was that anybody had a right to come down here and ask questions in the public, because we run into people in the streets all the time about raising, increasing employees, the constitutional offices, and I support increases for constitutional officers. I support the 4%. I just wanted to make sure that the employees would be actually receiving that, and it won't be a capital project, which I know you can't really do, but I'm just saying, because the public have different information out there, what you can actually do with money, because they don't know. They think we actually keep the money here, kind of commissioners, which we don't, which you already know. But thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Whitmore.
And Angel, I just want to be clear. You could give your county government side the 4%, but you, as the leader of the clerk of the court, don't feel it's fair, and that's why you would give it back, because you just said you don't want to give half of your office a raise and not the other half, correct?
Yes, there are approximately 90, 94 employees on the board side of the 264 employees that I have in my office. And if at all possible, I want to give everyone, they all deserve it. We've been short-staffed. They're maintaining their levels that they have to. We get reports, and I want to give them a 4% increase if I can, all of them.
And that's good, because we, of all the years I've been up here, I didn't know that the, I knew the public defender and the state's attorney were the state and some of you, but I didn't realize how many were actually state employees in your department, so that's good to know. And it's sad, because the state hasn't gotten a raise, we know, in three or four years. So that means your office hasn't.
They're clerk employees, but the funding comes at the state level-
Right.
-and it goes to a revenue committee, and there's a whole clerk of courts operating corporation, and then it goes divided up from there.
Right, okay. Good information.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes, what happens if we didn't make the recommendation for the 4% for the clerk of the circuit court?
If you didn't make that recommendation, I would have to discuss with my finance director, and we would have to, we would probably end up having not to be able to give a pay increase this year. As I stand here today, I hate to say that and make that presumption, but honestly, I don't know where we would find it. I don't know where we would find it.
But you're, on your state side, your employees that you have follow the state statute for its raises and increases? Is that correct?
We-
Well, you said they haven't given a raise-
Right.
-from the state level for its employees. I think Governor Scott.
They don't tell us how to spend our money. They give us the budget, and then we go from there. But what we try to do historically, we follow what the county does. And if the county were to say 3%, then we would look at our court side and say, can we do 3% on our court side? We would match what we're doing on the board side. So we follow what the county is doing.
Okay, basically like the property appraiser, okay.
Right.
Angel, I don't have anyone else on the board. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
It's painless. Yeah, thank you. There was no screaming from her. I, it's nice. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
After yesterday, you have property management, information technology, the county attorney, the county administrator on financial management. You could take a five-minute break, and we could bring up property management next, and then information technology.
Exactly what I was hoping for. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Any kind of way we can do public comment on just this, because I see people waiting just for this, and then going to our other stuff with county government, constitution office.
Commissioners, are you good with that?
I think that's a good idea.
I'm good. I thought we would, too.
All right, then before we take a break, let's go ahead and open the public comment. Anyone from the public that would like to come forward, come up to the podium and state your name, and it's on any item that was discussed here this morning, or today, this afternoon, rather, not morning. Oh, for some reason, I feel like it's morning.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Hunseger and Commissioners, my name is Larry Brown. I live in Tangelo Park. I also belong to the Federation. There's a lot of thoughts that went through my mind as these gave their proposals, especially the sheriff. You know, I appreciate what they do. They help protect us and keep us safe. And again, you know, when we make our calls from our little neighborhood, they're usually right there, and we're thankful for that. I know he's talking for somewhere around $700,000 or $800,000 extra. Somebody said there's like 385,000 new homes, is that right?
No, total people.
Total people.
363,000 people.
Oh, 385, say, 360,000 people. Figuring at three people per household, that's 120,000 homes. At 100,000, or at $1,000 a year for taxes, that's $12 million. It looks like there could be 700,000 come out of that to help pay the sheriff, and, you know, if there was some more impact fees put up the way they should be, there would be way more than that, because everything the impact fees pay for, and they're only allowed to pay for certain things, that means our tax money doesn't have to pay for those same things, so they can be used for other things. So I'm looking at dollars and cents. As a taxpayer, I'm fortunate enough to be able to pay whatever I need to do now. But we have an awful lot of people in the county that's on Social Security. You're talking 4% increase. That's great. I think they need it. But Social Security decides we, as elderly, don't need an increase. But we pay more on Medicare, and everybody wants $20 to $50 of that, no increase. Now, you're talking a little bit toward millage increase. We didn't get an increase. Now, if you could talk to Washington and increase ours a little bit, maybe we could afford, they could afford to pay that. I mean, it is hard for some of them to be able to meet this demand, and I understand. I'm fortunate right now. But I still recall back there when we could not go except for month by month on Social Security. And my wife and I, approximately $24,000 a year. Maybe if we get a few thousand more, we would have been in poverty level, or got up to the poverty level. But again, you know, that's some of that, but again, the ones that I heard, they was legitimate. They need this. The sheriff needs those deputies out there on the road. He needs ones in the jail to protect each other. You put one deputy in there with a handful of prisoners, and some of them really don't want to be there.
Okay, well, you know, we did flag it to find-
I know, and I really appreciate that.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I really do. So I'm hoping you'll really come up with that and help him, and go beyond that 700,000 and be able to get him another deputy or two out there on the road. He needs that.
Probably not going to happen this year, but we're doing the best we can.
Okay, so, and again, you know, with all the new housing out there in the east, that increases the number of miles they have to drive, and the hours they're on the road, and he, you know, there's where a lot of expense is coming, so let them help pay for some of this, and that's my desire. Thank you for the moment.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Catherine Edwards.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to thank the constitutionals for appearing today, all of them. All their time is valuable, and to take the time to come here and present before the commissioners is enlightening for the citizens as well. I'm sorry the taxpayer, tax collector couldn't decide to join them. I think it's appropriate, and I don't think the delay in his budget submittal to the state should preclude his visit here. Regarding the property appraisers' office, I had corresponded with the Board of County Commissioners on the, his payroll and pay raises as it pertained to last year's budget and this year's budget. It's still not clear to me that some of the pay raise wasn't used for new employees as opposed to pay raises from the last year's budget. He hired two new employees and took the 4% pay raise that was recommended by the county, although the county did not recommend new employees. And since the state approved three new employees, I would just appreciate clarification on where that 4% pay raise for last year and this year went, and how those, even though they're not hiring a new employee, whose position was approved last year, how those two new employees were compensated. That's it for the PAO. For the Manatee County Sheriff's Office, the ratios that he was discussing are 1.86 deputies per thousand, I believe. There's got to be some efficiencies at scale at some point. It can't just be increase in population demands a new increase in, in number of deputies. If you have an apartment complex, it increases in population from 1,000 to 2,000, does that automatically mean you need four deputies for that apartment complex instead of two? With respect to the 796K budget increase for additional, additional new hires, that's only a, a partial amount of the total cost of what those new hires are going to be. Because in the, for the example of deputies, well, they got to have cars. Well, they got to have radios. Well, they got to have computers. And so, that 796,000 is probably more like 2 or 3 million. I don't know where the other monies are coming from. For the SRO, so the sheriff maintained he had no dog in that fight, well, I, I'm sorry, I think Superintendent Mills' departure was predicated in large part on his attempts to get private security for his, for the, all of the schools in the district. I have, I have some others here I would love to discuss. Can I be allowed more time for each of the constitutionals?
Give you another minute.
Sorry?
We'll give you another minute.
Thank you very much. On the sheriff, he has not addressed any of the technology that the ACLU and other organizations have with respect to invasion of privacy, such as stingrays which are used, and how law enforcement is circumventing warrant requests for individuals. Cell site simulators and how they're used. This highlighted item there is for a helicopter that was obtained by the sheriff's office in 2008. He maintains he has two helicopters. This third helicopter was shipped in 2008, and his second, his two helicopters he shows were both obtained in the 90s. They think the Eurocopter was obtained a little bit later. So, there's a date discrepancy there that needs to be addressed. The clerk of circuit court definitely needs to develop on their database the ability for citizens to identify trends, in addition to just being able to go deeply into specifics for each individual's. The clerk of circuit court, it'd be interesting to know if they have any budget allocation for modifying their database, which is a bank that tells the public-
Kathleen, I'm going to have to ask you to finish up, please.
Which, oh, well, thank you. Which is a bank that tells the public how its government is functioning, and without that broad access to trends on the clerk of circuit court's database, the public can't do that on their own without considerable expense. And, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come forward? All right, not seeing anyone, we'll go ahead and we'll close public comment, and we'll take a five-minute break.
65 for the county attorney.
Thank you.
Oh, well, few things.
So, as I mentioned, six o'clock.
I hate it when you write.
What?
Are we, I'm going to go ahead and-
Yeah, it's time.
Yeah, we have a, we've got a quorum.
Forty-eighth.
We'll go ahead and, and reconvene.
It'd take me a hundred.
First up, Mr. County Administrator, is it property management?
That would be the fine folks from property management. Not that we're looking for sympathy votes here, but-
No, not at all. Is it working? That's what worries.
We have a few people that are out of town with our M3 crowd in Minnesota being recognized for their efforts. And Charlie Bishop is along, and so we have Maggie Daniels here, the chief financial person for property management. This is hopefully not a work comp claim.
No comp claims.
Workers' comp claim.
Workers' comp claims.
And also not a self-imposed injury. Maggie, why don't you take it away and explain to us where we are in property management in this budget? Thank you much.
Good afternoon, Maggie Daniels, Senior Fiscal Services Manager for Property Management. I'm here on behalf of Charlie Bishop, our fearless leader. He's in Minneapolis, I think, at a conference. And I'll tell you what conference he's at as I get into describing property management. I can tell you that property management has no recommendations for 2017. We looked at the budget, and we stayed, didn't request anything, stayed flat. And I think it's very important to note, how does property management do that? We are constantly challenged, encouraged by our Charlie Bishop. There's not a day, there's not an hour, there's not a minute, there's not a second, that we don't constantly think how to be more efficient, how to be more innovative. In my third year here, and prior to coming here, as Ed and Jan can tell you, years ago, Charlie envisioned how to save energy. He has brought onboard not $1 million in savings, not a couple. He has brought several millions of dollars in savings to the county. His vision continues to grow as he's at this conference for innovation. I'm sure when he hits the door Monday, he will say, Maggie, come see me. He will have many more plans. And this is what property management does all the time. This is our mission. How can we be more efficient? And how can we even help other departments be more efficient? With that said, property management is made up of 175 employees. We have very different services that we provide. We have facilities division, that's all our repairs and maintenance. We have a construction division that does all the remodeling and all the vertical construction. We have a grounds maintenance division, and it takes care of, I think, last count, 52 parks. Charlie Hunsticker probably will say more. About seven preserves, and all the grounds for all of facilities. We also have the survey division that does all the survey work for the county. We have a land acquisition division that acquires land, that surpluses land, and does many services for citizens that inquire for help on certain other activities. We have the records division. There was quite a discussion about records, research from the sheriff. I can tell you that the county has the same issue. We search thousands and thousands of records, and it's kudos to Debbie. Also, we have the energy division. This is a point for all our efficiencies that Charlie envisioned. And we also have the fiscal division and administration. I can also tell you that I usually say no to expenditures. Jan can tell you that. I'm known as Mrs. No. There's other ways of saving money. I could tell you that in construction contracts, the other efficiency that we're looking to save money is a technique called direct purchases. We take bids out of a contract and move them over to the county and save the sales tax. That brings extra savings to our contracts in construction. Property management has also struggled with stress in the workforce. With the economic turn-down, Mr. Bishop had to lay off 30 employees. We are also having difficulty retaining our employees. There was main mention of low wages that was discussed today. We have the same issue in three particular departments, ground maintenance, facilities, and construction. We compete with our neighboring counties, and just recently, this week, we competed with the school board. We lost a very stellar employee for more in an hourly wage. So, even our direct neighbors we're competing against. Right now, we have seven open positions. It's very difficult. Rodney Barnes described how difficult it is to get new labor into the workforce. The other issue that property management is dealing with, we have a lot of employees that have been here 25-plus years. February, we've already had three retirees. Those retirees are very, very difficult to replace because they're at the end of the pay scale, and to bring in a new employee with less experience, younger in age, is very difficult, particularly in construction, facilities, and ground maintenance, because the private sector has kicked up, and it's also our other leading competitor. Another point, point is, we are having trouble getting the younger into property management. The millennials are interested in higher pay, they're not looking at benefits. I can tell you that 50-plus age and over in property management is more than 60% of the department. That's quite a bit. We're facing quite a challenge moving forward. I think property management works very hard. We work smarter, and we always look to not do how it's always been done. We challenge ourselves to find a different way to do things more efficiently, more efficiently. Of course, many don't like change, but we're in it for the long haul to continuously become more efficient. So, with that, if anybody has any questions?
I'm not seeing anyone on the, well, there they go. Commissioner DeSabanino.
That's great, and I know you do great work, and, you know, the, there's, we're thinking about a project. Charlie already has a solution, and he's working on it. He's shovel-ready by himself. Just working on, are you working on the list of surplus properties to sell, which would bring in?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, we have a temporary employee that is drilled down into that very long list, realizing that those, that total count is very, very tiny strips of property. They're not full parcels. But so far, she has identified below 100 that we are going to present to move to surplus. As to the timing of that, it would be probably before the year-end. I can't promise that. It, it has to go through many steps to go to surplus. It has to go through a jurisdictional review with county departments, which takes some time.
Good, okay, so that would be money to come back into the general fund?
Yes. It would be money coming back in the general fund if the property came, was paid by general fund.
Okay. And if the property wasn't paid for, if we inherited the property?
No, if it came from a different funding account, then by whatever that funding count dictates, it might, might have to go back to that fund. But mostly of it is general fund.
Okay. And you made a very interesting point, and I think the second time we heard it today, about millennials wanting higher pay in lieu of benefits. So, my question to Ed and company is, is there any way to exchange benefits, health benefits, whatever, for increased pay? Is there any way to do that?
Not currently, but we're looking at that.
Okay. Are we mandated to give healthcare?
Well, we have the federal healthcare plan, and that has some requirements in it. Maybe Rob could speak- Maybe Rob could speak to that.
Because I know once you give it a sum, you have to give it. I know when my husband was self-employed, he had to give, if he had it, he had to give it to his employees.
Madam Chair, Commissioner DeSabanino, under the Affordable Care Act, Obamacare, that big, talks about we are required to offer to all of our employees healthcare. They may elect not to take it, but inasmuch as the county's health plan is pretty generous and affordable, most of our folks take it. So we already do have employees who, for various reasons, do turn it down when it's offered. For instance, their spouse is working someplace else. So we do have folks that don't participate in it. But in terms of trading higher pay for it, the only, I think the only thing you could do is probably look at what, if anything, do we save by those folks not taking the benefit? But then are those the people who need to get the pay back? In other words, the health plan may be saving by them not taking it, but they may not be the ones that, where the pay needs to go. There may be some other folks who are lower-paid or whatnot, who are on the health plan but who also need the higher pay. So it wouldn't be an apple-to-apple. In terms of the Florida retirement system, there's no legal opportunity whatsoever. That's all driven by Florida statute. If you become a county employee, you must go into FRS. We've even recently, I've worked with HR on finding some temp employees that aren't quite so temp that we realize we have to put on FRS, because if we don't, we're in violation of FRS.
So you're saying that even if they're temporary, they still have to go into FRS?
Well, there's a six-month trigger under FRS regulations. And so if a temp ends up working past six months, FRS says that's not really a temp anymore. So all that to say that we really don't have any flexibility there. I think the only place where we have flexibility, and the administrator has explored this in years past, is with the vacation leave and with the sick leave and all that. We do have a lot of authority there. And so if we restructure that part of our benefits package to say, well, you're going to get less vacation, we're going to have uni-leave, whatnot, and in exchange for buying that out or whatnot, and having in the future less accumulation, we can then give you higher pay. Now, that's something that Ed and Jan would have to calculate out, how much we would save, and how much of that could then be used for raises.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's a good discussion there. But I truly believe that your employees, been here for a while, will fight against that because it may, it may put them in, when you're talking about listing benefits and creating ways. Things have a habit of growing. But my question to you is that, how many openings do you have in your department? Or do you have any openings right now for possibility of hiring?
We have currently seven.
Seven positions available? You have applications pending, or?
I was just looking at the open account from payroll, and I have seven positions open that are marked vacant. As to the status, I can certainly get that to you from our HR liaison.
Yeah, I would like to have that. And I was turning to ask Mr. Barnes his question last year, but a lot of meetings, not just FIC, but other association meetings I go to, government agencies be there, you know, handing out literature about opportunities and that they have available. I think the sheriff just hired retired captain waiters to be like a recruiter for the sheriff department, for example, if I'm not mistaken. Where he actually goes to different sites and say, hey, we got this open, we got the availabilities. This is what we can do. It may take one or two years to do this, but we can get you in the door. They're actually selling, and a lot of law enforcement have been doing it for years, they got someone strictly signed for that. I don't know if we have that in Manatee County Government that goes to the different colleges and different seminars and set up a table, say, hey, we got these positions open to keep feeding good, solid help into Manatee County Government. I realize pay is an issue, and I think you stated that some left and went to the school board because of the lack of pay from that situation. In that case, without mentioning the name, what kind of different pay are we talking about?
It was a dollar more an hour.
Dollar more an hour. Okay, wow, it makes a difference for them. Seem to be kind of small, but it makes a major difference when you calculate that from that standpoint. And how long was the person actually here?
I would say about a year.
So we train them, and then they go elsewhere?
Yes.
That's what we had with the police department a few years ago.
Where have I heard that before?
Yeah, we train them, and then they go elsewhere, once we train them.
And it's becoming more difficult.
Yeah. And so the seven positions that you have, and I think you mentioned that a great number, percentage of your employees, I believe you mentioned, are over 50? Those that are over 50, do they kind of have half their retirement in already, or they just new people coming in?
They're more on the retirement side.
Retirement side. And the positions that you're speaking of, these seven positions for property management, those positions spread across different departments within there?
Yes, predominantly facilities, construction, and grounds maintenance.
Okay, and each one of them have minimum requirements, for example?
Yes, sir.
Could you get that information to me? I would appreciate it.
I certainly can.
Thank you.
That's all I see on the board, so thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Next up is Paul Alexander, Information Technology. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
Take it easy walking, will you?
What'd she do?
She asked me when she came up if I thought she could get the sympathy vote. I said on the crutches, yeah, she's got a good chance. I wanted to take a moment. Where's Chuck? Stand up here for a second, Chuck. This is Chuck Peabody. He is our, and has been since I've been with the county, our CFO. He is, despite several attempts that I've had, decided to retire. The stars have aligned for him. And on August 5th, it will be his last day with the county. And I wanted to just publicly take a moment to thank him for his service to the county, and in particular, in support of me and our organization. And just appreciate all you've done, Chuck. In the essence of time, I'm going to give a bit of an abbreviated version of my presentation. In short, we have taken strategically with our technology and have coincided with the two-year budget cycle for the county. We are, planned our work, we're right in the middle of working our plan. And when we look at this budget, we've added nothing to it, we've taken nothing away from it, and the projects that we have been talking about are operating within the bookends, i.e. we're on schedule, we're on budget. We had only one desired unit in the budget, and it was for a staffing increase. It was for five additional positions. I can reference, if you'd like to see that, it's on page 70, it's decision unit number four. The desired unit was not recommended. And what is driving this, very simply, is just growth in the organization, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. And in spite of that growth, our staffing, like everybody else's, has remained flat. This is what's causing the constant pressure and the stress on our workforce. And over the long haul, it isn't going to be sustainable. We're getting through it right now, like my other teammates explained yesterday, but at some point, we'll hit a law of diminishing returns. When we talk about citizens coming in and the growth, what you heard yesterday was more roads, more bridges, permits, parks, libraries, animals, utilities, facilities. We talked about public safety, and we talked about community services. For my organization, that ripple effect equates to hardware, servers, and PCs, and laptops, and infrastructure that supports the county. And the key point here that I'd like to make is that our responsiveness that we have with our customers, the consistency of the services that we provide, the stability of the infrastructure that we put in place, and the effectiveness of how it is that we operate within, in our organization, has a direct impact on the business. I sat down and I dollarized something here and looked at it and said, you know, if a server is down, depending on which server it is, it can affect hundreds of employees and their productivity. If a network is down, it can actually affect thousands. If the internet is down, we can actually affect the entire county. And so I took a look at that and said, okay, what if a disk drive fails? What if the network's down? What if a server's down? And what if that equated to a 5% loss of productivity across the county? How would that affect my teammates and their agencies or their organizations? Believe it or not, just for the BOCC alone, that 5% productivity loss equates to 85 full-time equivalents. And on average, between $3 to $5 to $6 million. That's if we had that productivity. So my point here is, is that we do our best to keep the systems up, keep them running, enable the business. And that's where the stress and the pressure comes for my organization. I wanted to just share, and I'm going to be really, really conservative on these numbers, because this is what we're seeing in our growth. There's been a 43% increase in the number of databases that we support for our customers, a 39% increase in the storage capacity that's housing critical business information that the county relies on, a 25% increase in daily Wi-Fi connections of employees, and for citizen access, a 61% increase in security threats that are being stopped right at our borders, a 394% increase in internet throughput, 38% increase in the number of servers we maintain, 7% increase in email boxes, 11% increase in personal computers, iPads, printers, gateways, and other devices, a 56% increase in service desk calls, and a 33% increase in GIS services. Those are huge, double-digit increases. And we're happy to see those, because what that means is, is that our teammates and the agencies that we support are consuming more of our services, and they're finding efficiencies around the use of the technologies. Over the last 12 months, we completed 122 projects. And that was a significant increase over the year before, and we're currently working on 21 of those. A few of those were mentioned yesterday. The P-25 radio is one, voice-over IP is one. Those are the active ones that we're working on. And that completion is something that we really should be proud of, and we are. But what we also monitor of the 45 approved projects we have in the hopper that we've not been able to get to yet, we will. It's just we don't have the resources today to do them. And I would argue that that's a missed opportunity to help the business even further if we can't get to those. We completed 17,000 service tickets last year. When I came to the county, that's, we were operating between 3,000 and 4,000, so a very significant increase in the service tickets. And we feel good about that, too. But we also are monitoring the 299 that are in the hopper that we've not been able to get to. That's our backlog. And so the growth we're experiencing at the current staffing levels isn't going to be sustainable indefinitely. And that's why I had requested the additional positions in the budget. One thing that I would like to say is, is that the equipment, and you know, this isn't the glitzy part, we always talk about the projects, but there's this beast of a network that we support behind the scenes. Things that we do that you really don't hear about, you don't need to, are the preventive maintenance on our equipment, the daily backups. About this time, when everybody leaves the county, we start running hundreds and hundreds of backups every night, and actually just complete those before we see our customers come in in the morning. Disaster recovery provisions, we need to make sure that we protect the system in the event that we would have any problems or issues. We have to be able to recover. We monitor performance. It requires tuning, security measures, system upgrades, patches, and those types of things. And so while we are still supporting the business, and while we are still getting the business done, we find ourselves in what I'm going to characterize as a veritable tug-of-war. And the tug-of-war is, is things like, do we work with our customers and complete these projects or requests, or do we care for the equipment? Do we take a chance and skip the preventive maintenance that we know that we should be able to do? Or do we work down the backlog? Do we address the performance issues, or do we try to pick up the project schedule? And so just in closing, one of the things that we've learned for certain is that the dollar that we spend on anything in a proactive way spends a lot further than that same dollar on the reactive side. And so we find ourselves constantly managing through that. Overall, that will reduce the total cost of ownership, and that's where we want to be. And so with that, that's the short version. I'll open it up and ask if there's any questions that I can help with.
I think I'm the first one on the board, and the only one at this point. Paul, tell me something. You've been with us, what, two years now?
Three years.
Three years. And how much has your department, how much has the budget gone up in those years since you've?
Well, we have remained completely flat when it comes to staff. We've added none, we've taken none.
How much monetarily has it gone up? Because I know you replaced a lot of the equipment and so forth. I remember you saying that it was very outdated, and we needed to upgrade, and so.
Yeah, we've put technology refresh in there. We've been spending, and this year it's a million dollars, and my understanding is we've got a half a million in there for next year. And one of the things that I was telling the county administrator and Jan recently is, is that we're going to hit a spot here at the end of '17 and coming out into '18 where we finally have the majority of that obsolescence worked out of the system.
Okay.
Now, in parallel with that, that-
Back to my question. How much has it gone up in the last couple of years? Do you know right off? Jan, do you know?
I'm looking right now.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll tell, and that being said, I mean, you know, I know that you've done a great job, not taking away from it, but, you know, in trying to be fair. Also, the constitutionals, we're not doing anything with them at this, we've left them alone, have we not?
Well, no, there are things that they are involved in. So for instance, the voice-over IP, the telephones, that spills out into the constitutional areas. We support the network.
But their software, we're leaving those alone now? That has not worked out from what I gather and been told?
No, there are projects that cross divisional boundaries. Each of the constitutions will have some of their own systems that they run, but we also support some of them. So for instance, one solution would be a good example.
But they still have their own software that they-
They do.
-keep it separate, so that-
They do.
Because like with the clerk of the court, her being, you know, her department being one that audits us, then we need to make sure that we don't have access to their-
They do. Each one of the areas has their own things. For instance, in the property appraisers, their mass appraisal system, their CAMAS system is a good example. The sheriff has applications and things that are very specific to their organization. We share a common network.
Okay, but they do have their software that we cannot access, so they do have the privacy for their audits and so forth?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I was curious about that. Do we know how much?
If they can bring me the paper, they have it. They're trying to email it to me.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. We're not able to get it through. Thank you. That's okay. The actual department itself, and I think that's the question I want to make sure I'm understanding.
The IT department as a whole.
In FY '15, it was 11.1 million, and in FY '17, in the budget before you, it's 13.2. But now that doesn't include the projects that we've done, that you've invested quite a bit in.
I think that's what you're looking for. How much have we invested in technology over the last three years?
That's exactly it.
We will get you that number, because we have made a concerted effort to replace that obsolete equipment. And that number is not in here. As Paul said, the operating costs of the department has been relatively flat. But the investment that those people have made in replacing hardware and software has been substantial.
Substantial. But you do still get the 4% increase for your staff, like all the other departments?
Yes. I will get you that number on the projects. We have that available.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have. Anyone else? No?
Oh, did you, by the way, did you mention about the phones? You and I had a conversation about the phones in the commission offices, and about being updated.
Yes. That's the voice-over IP system. That's a project that's been approved. Commissioner Chappie, I think you asked about that yesterday, too. We are actually up and running on that new system right now. We've completed what we call the factory acceptance testing, failover redundancy, and that type of thing. and that type of thing. And within my own organization, we've probably got about a dozen phones that are up and running right now. There are a couple of small things that we're working on with the vendors to work through, and we are planning then for a phased rollout that will occur about this time next year. We should have that all behind us. But we're going to have to take area by area and very methodically go through, train on how to use the new system, stage actually the phones side by side, and then on the day we take the cut, the old goes away, the new one comes into place, and we'll have to do that geographically throughout our entire county.
Okay. Do we have a timeframe?
Yeah, this time next year, we will be complete.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we would recommend the county attorney's office, one Mitchell Palmer.
Who is that?
He's a new fellow.
What page is?
A seasoned veteran.
Well, still learning every day. Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I do not have the fan club that Sheriff Stube had. I've got a grand total of two folks with me, Chief Assistant Rob Eschenfelder, whom you know, and Patty Nolan, my personal assistant and our legal office administrator, so...
Hello, guys.
All right. We do not have any decision unit requests per se, as I understand that term to be defined. We have, on the other hand, requested, we've made a modest request, what I would characterize as a modest request, for an increase in our operating expenses. And so let me go through those with you. Let me start by saying this, I suppose, that we continue to take pride in the fact that the county attorney's office represents less than one-half of 1% of your overall county budget. So I would like to think that we remain a very inexpensive proposition for you. We've, again, we've requested a modest increase in our operating expenses totaling, by my calculation, $69,250, covering professional services, which is court reporter services, experts' fees, covering a small increase in travel expenses.
Mickey, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find, where are you?
Page 65.
I'm not even sure that I have in front of me what you're working off of.
I don't think you do, no.
Madam Chair.
You've got two pages, right?
I don't see anything about what you're talking about.
We've got two pages.
We have two pages here.
Nothing, just a couple of numbers.
Nothing about travel, none of that.
Okay. Okay.
I'll bring you what they have.
All right.
Sorry, Mickey, I don't have a clue what you're talking about.
You're working off the budget program.
Yes.
And all they're looking at are these two pages.
Okay. Well, I've got those two pages. Okay. So, you know, that's obviously a much simpler layout. Okay. So the first of your two pages is the county attorney's side of the House. The second of your two pages is the risk management side of the House. And so, again, I don't know what kind of detail you want to get into, but, you know, that number, that number on the county attorney's side, the first of your two pages, that number, $2.371 million, reflects the modest increase that I just made mention of, to the tune of $69,250 in our operating expenses. And again, the bulk of that falls under the category of, again, court reporter expenses, experts' fees, in-house copying, and then, last but not least, outside attorney's fees. We have seen an increase in recent years in our need to turn to outside counsel, and so we've requested a modest increase of $25,000 in that line item as well. So all of those numbers that, you know, are reflected in that $2.371 million number that you see there. Now, in terms of personnel, we remain steady. Obviously, we're not asking for any new personnel. We have a grand total of 24 folks in the office, and let me break that down for you. Nine lawyers, five paralegals, four legal assistants, one receptionist, and then one risk manager, three claims adjusters, and a risk analyst position. The risk analyst position is presently vacant, although we interviewed yet another candidate as recently as this morning. So again, that's a grand total of 24 budgeted positions, and so that remains steady. If I could take a moment, this seems like an appropriate time, to mention what's been going on on the risk management side of the House. In the space of roughly five weeks, beginning on April 28 of this year and up to June 9 of this year, in the space of roughly five weeks, the Florida Supreme Court has managed to turn the workers' compensation statutory program in the state of Florida upside down. My office has already dispatched one memo to commissioners within the last week, talking about the first of the two decisions, that being Castellanos versus Nextdoor Company, in which the Florida Supreme Court determined that the attorney's fee statutory scheme is unconstitutional, which served to cap claimants' attorney's fees, and we are now back to an hourly rate format for attorney's fees in the workers' comp arena unless and until the legislature fixes the problem. The second of the two decisions was handed down on June 9, Westfall versus City of St. Petersburg, in which the Florida Supreme Court stated that the 104-week maximum for an injured worker to collect temporary disability benefits is also unconstitutional, and the court ordered that we're going to revert to the old system, which allows these kinds of temporary total disability benefits to be extended up to five years. This is going to result in a dramatic increase in workers' compensation expenses throughout the state of Florida unless and until the legislature fixes the problem. So right now, we're monitoring the situation closely. As I stand before you, we're not asking for an increase, or we have not asked for an increase, in the workers' compensation component of our risk management operations, but stay The experts are predicting, in fact, there's an organization by the name of N C C I, National Council on Compensation Insurance, which does estimating around the country on workers' compensation costs, and they are predicting, as a result of these two Supreme Court decisions, an increase in overall workers' compensation costs of anywhere from 15 to 20%. And so this is going to affect our excess insurance policies, it's going to affect the actual claims that we pay out, and so, again, I just, I need to bring this to your attention. We don't have a handle on numbers yet, but I've got to bring it to your attention, and so that's what I'm doing. So in any event, we, you know, we remain pretty steady in the county attorney's office, again, a modest operating expense request, and I think that pretty much concludes my remarks. And we, and our operating expense request, as I understand it, has been granted by the administration and will hopefully be granted by this Board of County Commissioners.
I'm first on the board. Mickey, I'm curious, I'm looking at the risk management budget, and I'm looking at your budget, and it's such a huge difference in the two, and yet I'm looking at the number of personnel and everything. Can you kind of just give me a quick rundown of why there would be such a huge difference in the two departments?
Sure. You are required, first of all, county government is a self-insured governmental entity. You are required to keep certain reserves in place in order to manage your self-insurance program.
Okay.
So that big number that you see on the risk management side of the House, that accounts for claims that we pay out on a very regular basis, whether it's workers' compensation, whether it's general liability, whether it's automobile liability. Remember, we cover all of the sheriff's auto liability claims. And so that big number that you see is, that's, you know, we literally run a mini insurance company within this government, and so like any insurance company, you've got to have adequate reserves on hand at any given time to cover those various claims that come in on a regular basis.
Okay.
Yep.
The next thing I just want to say is that, you know, I'm looking at your total budget, and when you look at all the work that all of you guys do every day, you know, we are constantly asking you for something, or you're involved in this for the county or that for, I mean, you guys just perform and do so much for this county government, and you do it with very, in a professional manner, and just always on top of everything. And I just want to say that I think it's great. You guys are awesome, and for the amount of your budget, it's amazing. So I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Chappie.
Yeah, I wanted to add the kudos.
See, that's what happens when you make me go first.
I'm not the chair. You had a choice. But yeah, I really appreciate it. You guys got a great team over there.
I'm very proud of my team. We work very hard every day.
You do.
Just, thanks. Really appreciate it.
You do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make sure that I have it correct. On the right-hand side, Mr. Palmer, what you just were speaking to is the liability, auto liability, workers' compensation, and administrative function, and I think the total amount is $9,851?
Correct.
That's on the right side, correct?
Correct.
But your spending budget's on the left side.
Say that again?
Your spending budget on the left side for your employees is $2,371,416.
Right. Well, again, the best way that, for me to characterize it, is the page on the left side is the county attorney's side of the House.
Okay.
Okay? The page on the right side is the risk management side of the House, is the best way to look at it. And the page on the right side with that much larger dollar number, that is your insurance company that you are essentially running within county government.
And the Florida Supreme Court decision, that you say it was two decisions just recently made, that has changed the workers' comp statute?
Turned it upside down.
Okay.
I'm by no means a workers' comp expert. I mean, we do have experts in the risk management division. Joanne Gallo is a walking textbook on this stuff. But the experts are saying that, first of all, that the legislature needs to act very quickly to fix a system that the Florida Supreme Court has now labeled as unconstitutional. But in the meantime, we are reverting back to paying benefits for a much longer period of time in terms of temporary disability claims, and we are reverting back to paying claimants' lawyers on an hourly basis as opposed to a statutory formula.
Wasn't it 13 weeks? What was the old statute that they made?
Well, the old statute was 104, the old statute was 104 weeks. And claimants will now be entitled pursuant to the Florida Supreme Court's decision on June 9 to up to 260 weeks of temporary total disability benefits. So it literally extends the benefit period from two years to five years.
And the attorney fees at the 104 weeks were set, what was that, the limitation on attorneys versus now? I think you were saying...
It was, it's a statutory formula that I can't recite off the top of my head, but it's a statutory formula based on the benefits that the lawyer achieved for his or her client. This assumes, of course, a contested, a contested claim. You know, we investigate and adjust our, we investigate our claims very aggressively within my office. We attempt to adjust them very aggressively, but there are occasions when we either deny a claim, and it is typically in the situation of a denied claim when the, but oftentimes, oftentimes, the claimants will go out and hire counsel before we either admit or deny a claim. They have the ability to do that. And so, but more often than not, when the attorney's fees tabs tend to rack up is where there is extended, an extended dispute over a denied claim.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
And again, now, you know, as opposed to it being a benefits-achieved formula under the statute, the attorneys, at least for now, are going to be paid on a straight hourly basis. And so some might argue that that is an incentive for the attorney to engage in what we call churning the file in my business, just racking up a lot of unnecessary time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Unfortunately, that goes on in my profession.
More often than not. All right, I don't see anyone else on the board, so I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have financial management, and Jan is here, and that would be on page 77.
I have those two pages. I'm just ready to go into much greater detail. Thank you.
Yes, commissioners, my department, small as it is, in the last couple of years, you've invested heavily in technology. One of the main things you did was place $2.6 million into a One Solution system. That's basically the general ledger system that the county will run on, which involves the clerk, the sheriff, our county government, and the property appraiser. In doing that, there was a section of it that involved the budget, which is a segue off of this main program. The current budget system that we're using right now is actually homegrown. It was developed back in the early 80s, and it's been developed over time by just an in-house person. We're very limited into what we can do. It is not Windows-based, and I can't even tell it what report to print out. I get what I'm, I push a button, I only get what I get. What we're asking for within this budget are a couple of things. The one that is desired, number seven, is a budget software system. This system would work alongside the new general ledger system and be able to get a budget to you in a much easier, readable format. We're very limited where we're at, and as you're increasing technology, we'd like to move forward. There is a piece of the actual One Solution product that we're actually still investigating if somehow we can tweak that one system to use, to be able to use it, but it doesn't look as promising, so that's why we're asking for this. The budget consultant was enabling us to develop the budget to another level that was unfunded, and I'm quite okay with that. But the one that's very, very important is the top one alongside with the budget system, Cognos. Cognos is a reporting system. So if a report is needed, that we can actually train and develop those reports ourselves. Right now, if we need a report, I either call over to the clerk's office and ask Dan Wolfson if he can help us, or if I can ask Paul, there's one individual in his department that allows that work to happen. The best thing with the Cognos training, if I make a pitch, when we did this general ledger system back probably 17, 18 years ago, the clerk was the training force. They took the extra training and they learned. This time around, they would like us to learn and have teachers within our own house to teach everything. I do agree with that philosophy, and this would aid that so that the people we actually have, we have our own training and they have theirs. Those are the two items that we're really requesting that are before you, and again, they go hand in hand with the investment you've made in the general ledger system. The general ledger system will come online in 17, April of 17, and at that time, the budget system will be very far behind. So this is investing in technology, moving it up to the next step. The only other one, if I can keep going.
Yes, ma'am.
Within the purchasing department, on the next page, on 79, there are two items that are desired. One is the vendor registry and the task management system replacement. Again, both of these are software upgrades. What we're finding in financial management, we trip over ourselves trying to get the information, which is really readily available. which is really readily available, but because of the technology, we can't get to it. The Vendor Registry system facilitates upgrading the vendor product in purchasing to allow much ease in the task. The Task Management System is an internal product that allows us to maintain how fast we are getting things through purchasing. So, in other words, if there's any problems, any areas, it allows us to do the internal mechanism of looking, how can we do this better? It's a timing mechanism, and it's to benefit us. Those things, all of the things that I just mentioned are pure technology.
Commissioner De Sabatino.
I don't know if I would have a second, but I would go ahead and flag that fifty thousand dollar item for, is that the one you needed that is in yellow?
It's a budget consultant. It would aid us in selecting an appropriate budget system for what we have.
I'll second that for flagging.
I'm gonna give you the, what you need to go forward because this is so archaic.
Yes. Actually, that one will, would work hand in hand with allowing us to select a good budget system.
Got it. So, I'll flag that.
Okay.
It's a good idea. We just didn't have the money.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving along?
The remaining is on page sixty-one, just to...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I just had one question. How many employees do you have?
In purchasing, I believe I have twenty. I'd like to, I believe there are seventeen in purchasing, in the purchasing department. And in the audience is my entire budget staff. And I'd also, if I could take the chance, I'd like to give a shout-out. We have a new budget manager, Debbie Underwood, in the very...
Hand up! Nice to see you, Debbie. Welcome.
And as a point of comparison, when I was in Hillsborough County, there were thirty-six people in the budget office. That's our budget office now. They do the work of thirty-six people. Good work.
Sorry.
Can you, can I ask a quick, can you explain that fiscal transparency web platform again, please? It wasn't funded fifty thousand, number five?
Yes. One of the largest things with technology accelerating the way it is now is the transparency in county governments. This is a web platform that would allow, on our website, it literally takes the general ledger data. It's not hosted on our website, it's hosted on another one, and it allows it to be interactive. So, your user, your manager, your citizen, whoever, can actually pull the data and drill down if they wanted to report on expenses, on revenues, any of these other items. But it is, we did not fund it because it is an added level of service beyond what we have right now, but it is where most of the governments are going to.
We thought it would be better to bring up the new budget system, make sure it works, and then open the door for the world to take a look in. Having them wander around while we're still trying to make it work would probably not help anybody. It's a year away or two years away.
I just thought it was important people look at this.
Oh, yeah.
They don't want to go with transparency, huh?
Timing is everything.
Okay.
And everything you're funding is actually going toward transparency to help us be better.
We're trying to get there.
Absolutely. I understand that, but it's just...
Yeah.
It's amazing to me how far behind we are.
You know, on that note, I've got to say this. Jan?
Ma'am.
You put the budget together, and here there are items in your own department that were not selected. So, I mean, that just goes to show, I want to give a little pat on the back because you deserve it, your staff deserves it.
Serve it.
You know, you have items that you feel are so important to your department, and yet you did not fund them. So, that says a lot about who you are and how you run the department and the staff in the department, and kudos. Kudos.
Thank you.
On page sixty-one is the County Administrator and the Board of County Commissioners. There are no changes in staffing or funding in the Board of County Commissioners or the County Administrator. There are a total of fifteen positions. And so, it is continuing to run a fairly lean ship.
I've been looking for two days, and I can't find the four percent increase on this.
Yeah, where is it, as a matter of fact?
For those at home, the Board of County Commissioners salaries are set by state statute. We will get, by the state, and we will get a letter later on this summer that will describe the salaries of every county commissioner, every constitutional officer in every county in this state.
I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking. Commissioner Bussell, were you talking about the elected officials? I was, and I was talking about our staff. You're just pulling our...
I knew where he was going.
But the staff, support staff does get the four percent.
They will be eligible for the four percent. The County Administrator has a contract, he's ineligible. It's the, everybody else, the board gets set by the state, and everybody else is eligible for a four percent.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, since we've come in close to the budgetary, that ever since I've been a commissioner, which has been short, maybe sixteen or seventeen months, and I had always asked a question dealing with the elective body here on where's their budget, their individually budget. Since then, as I continue to go to fact, and I had a conversation where an organization wanted Pride Park and was asking Commissioner De Sabatino, I mean, what's the policy of county government on fees at parks and can they be waived? I get about three or four year requests.
Fees in what? I didn't...
Fees in the parks, people, do you waive them? Can we get them waived? Can you get them waived? I get emails every year, and in this instance, the email came to Commissioner De Sabatino or myself, and we forwarded to staff, came back with hunting that we are not allowed to do that. Since then, I was having a conversation with a commissioner from Osceola County, and I was telling her that she was inviting me to a event that she was putting on in her community. And I told her I had a conflict, and I said, well, is the county putting it on? She said, no, I'm putting it on. I said, well, who's paying for it? She said, we have our own budget individually. I said, well, I just spent three hundred and some dollars paying for a park fee. And she said, it's a betterment resolution, and each one of them, county commissioners, have their individual budget ran through county government with drafts for things in your district. Since then, I've found other counties our size and smaller in the budgetary process that can draft funds for their district, for parks, five-one-C-three, different things such as that I forwarded to you, I had staff to send it to you. It's a resolution that takes place every year during budgetary process. I'm not going to deal with it now, but there, almost every county has a budget that they can draft funds off through their executive, monitored by the county attorney, in a form filled out with a resolution once a year. And I had asked the county administrator about it when I found out about it, and he said, we never set one up here. So, I'm saying this now that as we move on, and there's things that I respect the community, other county commissioners have budgets that they can draft, that if they see as a viable issue in a community, a park, or even scholarships they're giving in their areas. And it's widely used out of the sixty-seven counties. And so, that's why these association meetings are important, because people say, how in the world do you do your job as a commissioner if you can't do anything for your constituents? And you don't have your own individual budget? So, I'm gathering that information, and you'd be stunned at what we don't know. And frankly, the commissioners told me they don't want you to know this, but it takes you to do the resolution when you do your budget to create that. For example, the five districts at large will have an allocation that they draft each year. There's a process set up, it's just like when you do a resolution once a year by travel. It's the same thing as a betterment grant. And once that's in effect, it's ran through staff, through the executives, and so forth. It's a qualification, I've sent that to you, but since then, I have ten more. But I'm not going to deal with it this year, we'll deal with it next year. I just want to let you know that when our constituents call us in our districts and we ask staff, say, well, we can't do this, we can't do this, they say, no, you can if you set your budget. And it's handled, you don't handle any money whatsoever if it's a draft, and it's set up through staff.
Are we familiar with this?
I remember getting a copy of what he sent.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to be around to vote against this.
Yeah.
No, you're not.
I think it would become a political football, and the opportunity for, you know, misuse of something like that is just so obvious, I just can't believe it.
I think I would like to perhaps have a workshop on this, more information.
Yeah, and I'm bringing this up, I appreciate the mayor leaving the door and don't want to do that, but for us...
None of us might be here with him.
Yeah, for us, too, when our constituents call us about programs with children and we don't have any legal way to help them, it's an opportunity, even if it's a dollar. But you will find that your sixty-seven counties who've moved into the twenty-first century have these issues available to them. Now, we've sitting here approving millions of dollars to department heads and constitutional officers who, by the way, have this in their budget, where they can disperse this. And I'm not dealing with our partners, Corporate America, who we're allocating money, who are doing the same thing that we can't do. So, I'm having this conversation now for next year, and that evidence will come forth that I have from that standpoint. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner De Sabatino.
Well, that's, that's good information. Any idea of what their budgets are? Is it individual commissioner, individual district has the same, do they have the same budgets for each?
Absolutely. They do.
And is there criteria that...
Criteria laid out, yes.
Pay for and so forth.
It's all laid out, what it can pay for, what it can't pay for, what's the qualification and everything. Staff handles that just like they handle it now.
And do the commissioners have to vote on each item?
No. Once that resolution, there's no vote whatsoever. You tell your executive you want to draft three hundred bucks for the park that they're asking for that we can't, that I had to pay, and they will draft that from your allocation just like they do now.
Right. And thank you for honing that up. I know we all do.
Yeah.
I know Commissioner Whitmore would have said this, but, you know, during the downturn, when we did get a modest increase, I know she and I didn't take it, a couple other commissioners at the time didn't take, even it was, it was a modest increase when the other employees weren't getting anything. So, you know, I know she would have said that, but, but our increases are modest each year.
And it's set up, just like you got this, and we're not doing any, we're not doing what the rest of them doing, no matter, I mean, from that standpoint. And that's between me talking to other elected officials about, I can't believe you don't have a budget.
Right. And also, I know a lot of us travel a lot, especially the at-larges are all over the county, and we don't get reimbursed for mileage, and we don't put in for it.
We don't put in for it locally at all.
I know, I travel all over the state and I don't put it in.
But I just want to put that out. I was continuing to gather information, and what I'm talking about is no different with staff and constitutional officers doing. If it's a park issue or some that you need to take care of, you think is vital, look at the Osceola one. I have about fifteen more of those from other counties, and they're coming in left and right. So, this is nothing new, it just was not set up for county government, but it's widely used because we don't have any resources, people assume we do. We don't have any resources to do anything in our communities when people come and ask us, and we normally ask staff to do it, and we don't get it done.
Or we pay ourselves.
Or we pay ourselves, and so, the public needs to be aware of that. But as I started talking to other elected officials, and this is what they started telling me from that standpoint, plus, you know, I sent one document in Osceola, but it was too close to budgetary to deal with it from that standpoint. The other information I have, you know, in the budget process, you could, you'll have all that information for what it tells you, what you can do, what you can't do, and it's a resolution from the Board of County Commissioners. Don't benefit us, it benefit our constituents from that standpoint. And as you know, people call us for things, and we just can't do it because we don't have a budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm next on the board. You know, I, I agree with you in that now is not the time when we're this far in the budget for this year. So, maybe next year, after we get through elections and, you know, we see who's still here, you know, maybe then we can have a workshop or discuss it and see, see the feel of the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Chappy.
Yeah, I, I realize I haven't seen all the documentation, but I probably would tend to agree with Commissioner Bussell about, you know, I'm always a little, I'm always hesitant, not always a little, I'm always hesitant when it comes to giving elected officials a pot of money that they can individually, even with the criteria, distribute. It makes me a little nervous. I don't even, I don't even have my E-card or whatever that card is. I don't want it, I don't want to be near it.
Me neither.
I know, I was, when we got briefed the other day, I was like, what?
Yeah, you know, and as far as, like Commissioner De Sabatino had just said, you know, I'm not one, I don't think, I've never turned in a gas. To me, I think we make a lot, I think we make a nice chunk of money.
Well, this wouldn't do that anyway, Commissioner.
I understand that.
Wouldn't do that at all, what you're talking about.
Commissioner De Sabatino brought that aspect of the discussion up. Not dealing with you, but she was talking about turning in, turning in receipts for trips and things. You know, I, I've even paid my own way up to Tallahassee and my room and board up there, but...
I have not done that.
I, I'm always hesitant to, I think we make a nice chunk of money, and I'm not in it for the money, I'm in it for the, trying to serve, like we all, like we all are.
Chappy, I think we would all agree with that.
Like we all, I was, let me finish, like we all are. It's, it's more of a calling, I think, so, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
For the record, Commissioner Chappy, I served about fifteen years, making five thousand dollars a year. No insurance, no benefits.
Wow.
Okay?
You're not the only one.
It's not about the money.
You're not the only one.
And you heard Senator Bennett says that people need to go to these meetings, and maybe that's why this county is like it is today, because we're not to the meetings. It helps legislators get things passed. So, if you don't want to travel, that's fine, but to try to throw something out that is something wrong with people who travel behalf of it, rather than...
I don't think that's what he was...
Well, no, well...
I'm a little surprised he's taking it so personal.
He's leaving, you know, in certain things, if you're leaving, conversation that you don't get in if you're not going to be here. I appreciate your comment, but you're not going to do it to me.
Okay, well, I don't think there was any harm intended.
Oh, you're leaving.
Move on, please.
And I can care less what you go vote on.
But I have another day like yesterday, I will...
However, anyway, everybody knows that.
I'm not the one that threatened Commissioner Bennett Banack about good luck with her commission, with her...
Well, good luck with yours, too.
Y'all go ahead.
I'm not worried about it.
Good luck with yours, too.
I'm not worried about it.
Good luck with yours.
We're done.
I'm going to still continue serving.
Yeah, you keep doing that. You know what? People say you don't go nowhere, the constituents that need your help, and help nothing.
Go ahead. Thank you.
I believe all of the Commissioners are here to serve the people, and I'm thankful that you're all here. And with respect to Commissioner Chappy's comment... And with respect to Commissioner Chappy's comments on use of e-cards, I would submit that any way that the commissioners can put their salaries in reserve to help them address situations such as Commissioner De Sabatino finds herself in, unfortunately, it might be appropriate. Regarding the presentations from property management perspective, Commissioner Smith said basically it's, they train them and then they go elsewhere, and that's probably because the county has no, no reliable upward mobility paths identified for many of the employees, especially on the lower tiers. With regard to information technology, he mentioned a backlog of services, a 999, that's a suspicious number, and I just wonder if he, if his computing capabilities prevent him from recording more, might be larger. On the county attorneys, he mentioned that his, his budget's less than half percent of the total operating expenses for the county, but they do farm out a lot of this legal work. For example, the URS settlement had legal fees for the county of $1 million. I'm assuming that's covered with the risk management section of his, of his department. I'd like to know, though. From a financial management perspective, I cannot imagine anyone being more open to the public than Jan Brewer has been and made herself available to ask my mundane questions and possibly many others' mundane questions that anyone with her training would wonder, why on earth don't they know this? I am concerned about the no funding for the fixed transparency web trans, platform. I think that's a fantastic idea, and I hope that it can see its way into being funded the next couple of years. The last comment I have is regarding the county's funding in general. Maybe it won't come up. But there's a plot that was prepared by Jan Brewer for the Citizens Financial Structure Advisory Board that outlines the different mechanisms for fundings by other counties, other surrounding counties. I think it's an excellent argument for the infrastructure sales tax, and it'd be nice if the county made more use of the, some of the hard work that was put into that report. And, and finally, and lastly, as I mentioned by Commissioner Ball last week, or yesterday, on cross-training, Forbes Magazine had a very interesting take on that, that I think the commissioners and possibly other in the public arena might appreciate. Maybe some county departments do have cross-training, maybe they don't, but it looks like it's something that should definitely be considered to retain employees in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And by the way, you never have to worry about when you're asking about something, don't feel odd about it. I mean, most people in the public, they don't, you wouldn't know, so always feel that you can always ask, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public want to come forward? Public comment is closed, and this meeting is adjourned.